At this time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Boyd. He'll do our invocation today.
Hope you'll pray with me. Dear God, be with us as we make decisions today that affect our community. Help us to make it a strong and viable community. Be with our government leaders and military as they keep our country strong and prosperous, and help us to be an inclusive society that remembers this is a country that was founded by immigrants and continues to let immigrants into our country with their diverse culture and religions. Thank you for our opportunity to meet today. Amen.
Thank you. As we'll call to order, June the 6th, 2018, Danville-Bull County Plains Zone Commission meeting at this time, a quorum is present. The first item is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting May 2nd, 2018.
Make the motion that we approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes. Financial report.
You guys have that in your packet. It's pretty straightforward. We're going to do a budget amendment potentially later in the meeting, but that's the April finance report. We'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Jenny, did you put that revised one that you're -- the revised one just has the percentages on the side that didn't go out in the original.
Make a motion to approve?
Oh, sir. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes. Letters of credit, Hunt Farm, reduction of cash bond amount of $20,742.59.
Yes, sir. You guys will recall, on letters of credit, anytime we do a reduction, a release, a renewal, we bring those before you guys. This is a reduction of a cash bond that we're holding, and obviously, as you know, we finished the paving on the Hunt Farm project, and the payment to Allen Company was $20,742.59 to pave those streets and build a temporary turnaround. So, in theory, we need to reduce that bond that we're holding right now, and that would leave us an amount of $30,967.20 that we'd still be holding against the sidewalk portion of the project. So, we need a motion to reduce that bond, and after that, there's another item that's not on the agenda related to the Hunt Farm that I'd like to bring up related to the sidewalk part of that project. I can do it in either order, whatever you guys want, but we formally need to reduce the bond so we basically can pay the bill.
Make a motion. We reduce the bond and pay the bill. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
All right. Related to that, and again, not on the agenda, real quick, you know the agreement that we signed with the developer and the county was that we would finish the paving, and then the sidewalk portion of the project would still be the developer's responsibility to complete, and we would hold the remainder bond money for that. The developer has turned in a proposal for the sidewalks, and as you recall, he had to get waivers. He wasn't going to build all the sidewalks. He had to get waivers from the property owners individually. I'm going to pass this around. It's kind of quick and very -- this is, I don't know if it shows what's in the orange, if I had this in my sight, but I want to show it real quick. What's in orange on my drawing is where the sidewalks are being proposed to be built on one side. You guys can visually see it, and you've got a drawing there. What the developer is proposing is to build sidewalks just on one side of the development. However, there's one little dot on that map. There was one property owner did not sign the waivers. And you'll see that. It's on the cul-de-sac section, lot number 95. So, one owner did not sign the waivers, and the developer's not showing any sidewalks, obviously, across his lot. It becomes kind of just an odd situation. He got 39 of 40 waivers, and people to agree with this would be the sidewalk plan for sections 1, 2, and 3, but there's one lot owner, again, that has chosen not to sign the waivers. Mr. Sharp's here and his legal counsel. At this point, where we're at is the planning commission, is you guys were supposed to see -- a sidewalk plan is supposed to come to us within 60 days of the paving. We obviously have a sidewalk plan now, and you guys are supposed to agree that that will work. There was a waiver component to that, and like everything, we got 39 of 40 waivers, with the one person that didn't sign kind of just out there amongst folks that signed the waiver.
So, does the owner of 95 want a sidewalk? Is that kind of what we're guessing?
I don't -- he just would not sign the waiver. I'd have let those guys speak to that. And again, I want you to see my handwritten drawing there, just so you can clearly see where the sidewalks were being proposed.
Good morning. The one lot in question just said they weren't really interested in participating. We don't necessarily know the reason if they want a sidewalk. If they don't want a sidewalk, they just weren't interested in participating for whatever reason. But to have 39 of 40 of the lot owners is 97.5% of the subdivision who had agreed to the modified plan. In fact, it was remarkable how easy the waivers were to obtain and how quickly people signed who said they did not want sidewalks to maximize their yard space and did not have them to maintain, and they felt that having them on one side of the street was more than sufficient for their subdivision. As you know, it's not a requirement in the county to have sidewalks, but it was in the original plan that was submitted. And just by virtue, I want to add this point as well. The subdivision restrictions for the Hunt Farm themselves allow for amendment by a simple two-thirds majority vote of property owners, which is not uncommon in subdivision restrictions. There's no provision in the law that requires unanimous consent to almost anything, and the fact to get 97.5% is remarkable, I would say, and shows a strong consensus that this modified plan meets the needs of the subdivision and the residents there.
Well, I think that was a question we had about the covenants. Would you like to address that, Henry?
Mr. Dexter, I was wondering, would you be able to present those covenants to the planning commission?
I have them with me.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take a look.
Sure. If you want me to read them into the record, or you can -- I'll read them in the record, and then you can pass them around if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
This is Article 31 in the Hunt Farm subdivision restrictions. It says that "Any provision hereof may be amended at any time and from time to time upon the execution and recordation of any instrument executed by owners of not less than two-thirds of the platted lots in this section." So, pretty straightforward, and that's a very common provision in any subdivision.
Will I make the motion? Will we accept a modified sidewalk plan?
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Send to our attorney here. So, of that, Kendall just walked in. That's 1,677 linear feet that we did a bond amount, just kind of rough, based on some discussions with the city and county governments. Mr. Sharp intends to build those sidewalks themselves, but we're -- we need to hold enough of the money that's left to make sure, if he doesn't, that we can finish them, based on now the revised plan. It's anticipated that we'll probably now have more money than we need since we're now doing sidewalks on one side. The question to maybe Henry is, if Mr. Sharp builds those sidewalks, the remainder of those funds we currently hold, we would release back to the developer?
Unless there are any more punchless items that are remaining unbuilt, then yes, you would release the rest of it.
If we were to build the sidewalks, just hypothetically, and Mr. Sharp did not, and we build them, let's say for $29,100, and we had $30,000, the other $900 goes?
Back to the developer.
Planning commission, there's, again, there's no really admin role unless that would have been assumed in front end of the bond, I guess.
Right.
Just a technical question. There's some of y'all have asked some questions about how all that process works.
As I recall, Mr. Sharp agreed to pay for all the sidewalks if the cost exceeded the bond. So, if it went the other way and it was more, he would reimburse the commission for the difference?
Well, at this point in time, the sidewalk plan you just approved, we're going to set a number on it and make sure we're holding enough money from the front end, which in this case, it's clear we will be at the bond amount of $14 a running foot. So, we'll have plenty of money. If anything, we'll have about $7,000 or $8,000 more. It's going to be my recommendation, we not release any money back until the sidewalks are in place. And if it turns out he does not build the sidewalks and we have to build them, then we'll make that assessment down the road, because who knows, maybe they'll cost us a little more, maybe a little less. But it's clearly, we have enough money with this reduction paying Allen Company to build that many feet of sidewalk. I almost said foot. So, yes, sir.
Wouldn't we be able to make an assessment now whether to give him the money back once the sidewalks are done? Because I mean, it would seem like he gave the money in the first place. I mean, I'm not understanding.
We're holding the money for the same items from the get-go, which we're paving and sidewalks. So, the original bond amount has now been reduced, and what's left at this point is just sidewalks. I don't think we want to give the developer any money back until the construction is complete. Now, he's told me personally, he intends to build the sidewalks right now. They may start digging dirt this afternoon, the way Jody was talking. He wanted to make sure the plan was satisfactory to the planning commission, and if so, the idea would be to go out and build all the sidewalks up front.
Yeah, I understand.
In anticipation for us to release the bond money back to him.
No, but you also mentioned that if we built the sidewalks and there was money left over, that we, the commission might get it, or the city might?
Well, my question is, what do we do with the remainder of the money?
We have to give -- I mean, I would seem to think we'd have to give it back, because he's the one who gave the money in the first place.
Well, there were some questions on. We played a little bit of a -- we had a little bit of an administrative role in this paving process, but there's really no way to recoup that unless it was set up contractually on the front end. I guess that's what my question was.
Yeah.
Enough of all that. Unless you guys have any other questions on that?
So, you need a motion?
I think we already --
We already did.
Yeah, passed that. We were just -- that was just a further discussion.
Okay. So, we're going to hold the balance of the money till sidewalks are completed and give Jody the first.
I do have one question. So, will he have -- okay, if there's a balance left, will he have to come back next month, and will you give it back, or will you just be able to write him a check after that's done?
No. Formally to reduce the bond, release the bond, you guys would have to give approval.
Yeah.
And we'll have to verify the work's been completed, and then, once it's done, I would come to you guys and say, hey, the sidewalks are done. We're holding $30,900 whatever, and we're asking for you guys to formally release the bond back to the developer.
Okay. Subdivision plat approvals. Since we have a lot on our agenda today, we're going to do those three at a time. So, if we look at the 1, 2, and 3, Dwayne and Kelly Brown have applied for approval of subdivision plat, Chris Penigraff applied for a subdivision plat, and Boyle County Habitat for Humanity. So, look at those. I think they've gone through TRS. Steve and go.
Just let me make a comment, although I don't have a financial interest in the Boyle County Habitat for Humanity. A lot, I am on the board, so I was going to excuse myself between both the discussion and the voting on the third one that we're going to be talking about.
Okay. So, let's look at the first two, and we'll pull out the third one. So, Dwayne and Kelly Brown, 1.07 acres, and Chris Penigraff, 1.006 acres.
And Jeff, I did the technical review.
Yes.
And both plats went through technical review. Corrections have been made and have been turned in.
I'll make the motion. We approve the first and the second subdivision approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. And number 3, Boyle County Habitat for Humanity has applied. Mr. Manning has refused himself from this. 0.22 acres on 1412 West Walnut Street. Any questions?
I'm with Danville.
Yes.
What is that, the west?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, number, actually, number 4, we're going to do separately, because our attorney has a question regarding that. Old Bridge Inc., subdivision plat, contracted land containing approximately 18 acres on Kentucky 34.
Did we have a representative for that plat today? My question was, who's the landowner for that property?
Old Bridge.
Old Bridge Inc.?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It looks from the Secretary of State's website, and I've got it pulled up right here, like that company is no longer administratively existing. They dissolved in 2015 or 1989. There were two different companies that had that.
Hensley, the attorney, well, attorney's in town, is one of the owners, and he signed the plat as Old Bridge and as deputy secretary.
But it's, the deed is in the name of Old Bridge Inc.?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if it would cause Mr. Hensley a great deal of trouble if we passed this for a month while we sorted out this issue of title, since a non-existent entity is the current record owner?
Can we table this until the end of the agenda, so they can?
If he were to have, yes. Yes, ma'am.
In the comments, he can come up.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote to table it? Okay, wait.
Table it until the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, just bring it back around. No vote needed.
Okay. It's going to be a while.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, let's look at, if we can go through 5, 6, 7, and 9. Number 8 has been withdrawn. So, James King, subdivision plat on track containing 16.4 acres on Caldwell Road, James Lawson, 7.785 acres on 280 Winter Hawk Lane, Mary and Patricia Carrier, 62 acres on US Highway 150, and the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, a portion of undeveloped right-of-way on John Hill Bailey Industrial Park. Jenny?
Yes, sir. First, we're going to go through the technical review, and all corrections were made. If that makes any difference, I'm looking for the estimate. And then, number 9 is actually going to be resented. So, 5, 6, and 7 are all correct.
And number 9 has?
Number 9 is perhaps we do that separately.
Okay.
It's going to be resented.
So, we need a motion for 5, 6, 7.
Correct.
Will I make the motion? We approve 5, 6, and 7.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes. Number 9, Boyle County Industrial Foundation requested to rescind plat application for a portion of undeveloped right-of-way. You guys want to address that?
Yes. I'm going through many old plats, and we're going to have the owners decide if they want to finalize the plat or rescind. This plat we received in 2009, and the Industrial Foundation, I received a letter from Jody Lassiter that the end of the cul-de-sac will need redesigned, so they'd have to submit a new plat anyway, so they wish to rescind this plat today.
Will I make a motion to rescind the plat?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, that brings to number 10. We have a preliminary plat renewal for Mike and Lisa Graves Crawford Springs Estates. This, I think, is the 19th renewal of this property.
When was the original approval?
19 years ago.
1999.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? All right, passes. Motion passes. At this time, we'll enter a public hearing. Number 1, Byrd Lee Storage, apply for approval of a site plan on tract of land containing approximately 0.547 acres located at 436 Roy Arnold Boulevard. The property is owned Industrial Business Development, IBD.
Thank you. It's been kind of quiet in here, so I'll spruce it up a little bit, hopefully. I'm doing site plans, flume amendment, subregs, and some housekeeping from here on out, and then, don't be surprised, but the screen's going to come down here in a second, because we get to the case a few back, we're going to have some stuff on the projector, so the citizens can see it. This site plan's pretty straightforward. Some storage buildings on Rory Arnold. You heard it's zoned IBD, Industrial Business Development District. It's 0.57547 acres. The total building under roof would be 83.25. Technical review, looked at the site plan. Everything was approved. Obviously, everything's going to have to come in compliance with the zoning ordinance, although I do want to point out a couple issues. As we reviewed the site plan, some things have sort of jumped out at us about setbacks, and some things looked odd. What we found out is, this is part of the urban renewal part of our community, and there were standards set for Rory Arnold that don't exist for a lot of other parts of the town. For example, in 1987 and 1989, the city passed ordinances that set different setbacks for the street, so they don't have to meet the 25-foot fronts, and so, they literally set unique setbacks, so these properties could be developed, because they were so close to the road and their depth to the street and the right-of-way. So, there's interesting notes about setbacks, drainage. These properties don't have to meet the quality aspect of the city's drainage, stormwater requirements. There's a note on this document there. But the setbacks looked odd to us when we saw it, and then we found out that the city passed rules specifically. So, it's a little odd that you have the zoning ordinance that says, here's your setbacks, here's your landscape, and the city has stormwater rules, but then there's other ordinances for Rory Arnold where this urban renewal that says, these are the rules for development in this area. So, this site plan complies with all those ordinances and with the zoning ordinance for parking and et cetera.
Is this currently vacant property?
Yes. And so, these would be storage buildings, and you can see with little narrow travelways down the sides as you're moving south, but at the end, actually, a wider travelway than required, as anticipated that maybe a bigger truck or someone unloading into storage buildings could make those corners and get around the bottom southern part of those buildings. Kendall Wise is here, if you guys have any technical questions. But the planning commission reviewed it for all the requirements, and again, the city's signed it already for drainage. The notes are all corrected, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about the project.
What are the ramifications of the differences in drainage?
Quality. You don't have to meet the quality requirements. You still have to meet the quantity.
I don't know what that means.
I will let Kendall explain it, but there is a note over there on the side of that site plan that says stormwater notes, and I'll let Kendall address some of that. But yeah, the city has a different.
It should say quantity.
Does it say quantity?
It says exemption from stormwater quantity.
But then here is, then here's the mechanical. Yeah, go ahead and explain all that.
So, there's a city ordinance that describes what requirements are for stormwater.
Do we need him to introduce himself, please?
Kendall Wise, Energy Engineering, sorry. And the ordinance allows developments less than an acre to be exempt from providing stormwater quantity control, so they don't have to provide detention. They still have to provide water quality control, and so all of the water from this site is routed around to a curb inlet that's shown on the plan, and inside that curb inlet will be an oil-water separator, a trash collection. It's a prefabricated unit that's going to be inserted in there that we went over with the city, and it's something that requires maintenance, but it's something that's required, and the developer will have to take care of the maintenance for that. So, we do, we do not have water quantity control. We do have water quality control. And all of the stormwater's being directed out toward Rory Arnold Boulevard, whereas right now, parts of it would run over land towards some of the back of the neighbors' properties, so we feel like we're going to improve any stormwater issues that might be out there today. It should all be better, because the water will be curbed and all directed toward Rory Arnold now, onto the street surface.
Willie, you may have any questions for Kendall? I will address you shortly. At this time, do we have anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, since this is a public hearing? Correct? Okay.
I have a question. How will this affect, I think you said it, but I kind of missed it. The, okay, the properties around this, because the stormwater drainage, will that affect the other properties around this?
So, currently, probably 90% of the water that falls on this site or runs onto this site would go to the, to the, to the south and east. And what we are doing is fixing it so that water that falls onto the site will run off of a roof or run off of pavement, and it will all be routed around that horseshoe and out toward Rory Arnold Boulevard on the east side. So, the buildings will be elevated above the pavement. If needed, there's going to be curbs put along the edge of the pavement to intercept the water and keep it from going to the south and to the east. So, probably, even though there will be increased runoff because of the impervious areas, 90% of the water that is currently going to the south and to the east will no longer do that. It will have to go toward Rory Arnold Boulevard.
Okay, we have a question for Niles. Would you please come and introduce yourself?
Thank you. I'm Anne Young, and I'm the property owner of the south and the east, I think. I believe that's correct. So, I have down on this particular property, a pretty much vacant lot and a concrete block warehouse that sits pretty much to the right corner of where the storage units are proposed. We've had very, very little water problem there in the past, and I have just several concerns there, partly with the paving. I've looked at the site plan. I don't, I understand there's going to be curbing. I just don't know how high. I'm thinking of this four-inch rain we got the other day that kind of just came out of nowhere and flooded everything, and with less vegetation there, once this is all developed, I think it, I'm concerned about the runoff there. I'm also concerned that all of this water is, that's I'm also concerned that all of this water is, that's going to be a lot of water to filter all the way forward to Roy Arnold from the back building of these storage units with what appeared to me to be your typical gutter size, like four inches. I just, I don't know how all that water cannot possibly run off to the southeast in some particular way. And I'm not sure, based on what I've found here, that that piping, that four-inch PVC piping's going to be large enough to carry that. So these are my concerns. Mainly, they're the downspouts on the back of the buildings. You know, where is that going? And I don't exactly understand how curbing's going to stop that in the case of a large rain.
Yes.
Yep. According to this, is it like a six-inch drop in the front there? Am I understanding that right, over here? Jeff, you could look at it. You probably get to it. Is that enough of a drop? It seems like, you know, the elevation, you can see the elevation is nine thirty-seven fifty, and then it's nine thirty-seven. So if that's six inches drop, is that enough?
I think you need to ask your engineer.
No, I'm saying, so in other words, to her concern, if the elevation of where it enters is nine thirty-seven fifty, right? And where it goes out is nine thirty-seven, that's only a six-inch drop. So if there's a deluge, it would seem like that would take care of that. I don't know. I'm not the expert, but I just look at that, and I just want to know an answer for it, that's all.
She's in the back.
Yeah, but I mean, still, it's gone.
So the
It's going to back up, you know.
The purpose of the curb inlet is not to convey the stormwater. The purpose of the curb inlet is to provide a place for the water quality unit.
Okay.
For water quality, you have to, you don't have to treat all of the water. The purpose of the water quality ordinance is to try and capture the oils and the things that are on the pavement before the rain happens. So you're only supposed to, you're only required to treat the first flush is kind of the term. So all of your trash and all of your oils are going to be on the pavement, and when the first bit of rain happens, that's the water you want to capture and treat. That's your first flush. So that amount of water will be going into the curb inlet. If for some reason we do get a large storm, the curb inlet will fill up. That four-inch pipe, as she said, won't handle all of the water, but it's okay. The water just goes on out to Roy Arnold Boulevard. So really, the only purpose that we have for the curb inlet and the stormwater quality unit that's inside of it and the four-inch pipe is to handle the first flush.
How's it, it's going to back up?
No, it won't back up. It will continue on. If the curb inlet's full, it will go right on, right on out, along the curb line to Roy Arnold Boulevard.
And I guess, you know, my concern is not really the quality of the water. Maybe it should be, but is the quantity of the water. And, you know, I saw places flood two weeks ago all over town. So, and I understand this, you know, it's passed in the eighties with urban renewal. That whole area back down in there pretty much came under urban renewal at the time. It was greatly improved. But it disturbs me that something can still not now fall under new city ordinances of stormwater as much problems as we have with that. I just still would like to see a better method and be more reassured that this water is not going to go there, and if it does, what our recourse is for that.
And I'll address that. I mean, I'll say that we're, I feel like we're one hundred percent compliant with the city's stormwater ordinance as far as what's required of us. I will say that we are taking the avenue of accepting the exemption. We're not providing any water quality quantity control, and so we are going to dump more water onto Roy Arnold Boulevard than what was going there before. I'm not saying. But that's allowed according to the stormwater ordinance. So, and the city signed off on our plan, so I'm assuming that they feel like there's not a problem with the storm sewers on Roy Arnold Boulevard and downstream on Fourth Avenue. So.
What is the grade drop from the back of the parking lot to the Roy Arnold Boulevard? On the, you know, on the finished grid?
The highest, the highest point of elevation change on the parking lot is five feet.
So it drops from, a five-foot drop from the back to the front?
Right. The highest point of elevation in the parking lot is on that southwest corner of the pavement where we have a spot elevation of nine forty-three and a half. And the lowest point on, where our parking lot intersects Roy Arnold Boulevard is nine thirty-eight point three. So that's more than five feet.
Okay, now, but Ms. Young's property is behind that, correct?
The corner of her building's actually shown on our drawing in the southeast corner.
Does her property's run on Pross Lane?
It's on Pross Lane, correct. And then there's the building next door to the proposed unit is right behind it as well. So that kind of southeast corner is just, there's a large drop there, so.
Well, what I remember is that you need a quarter inch of foot for water to drain, and that would be, if you look at this property being a hundred and forty foot long, roughly, a quarter inch would be like a three-foot drop, and you've got a five-foot drop. So it appears that you've got plenty of drop for the water to flow out naturally.
What would the difference be if, between, if it fell under the water quantity rules? What would the difference be?
If we had to manage water quantity, then we would have to put in a stormwater detention basin. Because we're increasing the amount of water that's going to run off of our site, we'd have to put in a pond or a underground stormwater detention system, something that had, that could fill up whenever a big storm came, retain the water temporarily and then discharge it.
And I know there've been at least two, and probably they don't fall right here in this urban renewal area, but two properties nearby in that area that have had to do that. So in recent years of development.
Because they didn't, they weren't underneath that, they weren't grandfathered in that? Or what was the reason for that?
We recently did some work further up Roy Arnold Boulevard for Dane Burris. He built the storage building there. We were able to create water quality control by creating a basin, so it appears to be a detention basin. It has a sand filter in the bottom of it. We looked at doing something similar to that here, where water would go into a dry pond and had a sand filter in the bottom of it. You know, that volume's not big enough to really provide true quantity control. It's just taking that first flush water, and after that, the water would overflow, you know. So at Dane Burris's site, it appears as though there's a detention basin, but it's actually just a water quality basin with a sand filter in the bottom of it. Other development that I've done out there, Firm Solutions across the road had an existing stormwater detention basin that was on the next street over. They added on to their building, so we increased impervious area. But I think we added a water quality, we added a sand filter in the bottom of their detention basin. But again, because the change wasn't more than an acre of change to the site, we didn't provide added stormwater quantity control. So I don't know of any stormwater detention basins that have been put in out there, but those are just the two projects that I can think of that I've worked on.
I don't know if they're basins, but I knew, do know that the Settles property, there was a new building built there, kind of behind the funeral home, a couple streets over. And then the area on Beatty Avenue, I think, also has had to, that center owns near the end of Beatty Avenue by the railroad, also had to come up with some way to help retain that water as it comes down. If you look at the property visually, which I know it's going this direction, but there is, there's a large drop off that five feet, whatever, there. There's just not a huge amount of space from where this is to where these buildings are.
I have a question. What's the, do you know what the elevation of your property is?
I do not, unless it's listed here.
I mean, in other words, it looks like, see, there's a basin. Because the lines are closer together, that means it's a bigger drop-off, right? Isn't that correct? See, so in other words, it's nine thirty-five here, but what's, hers is, hers is.
Let me just, let me demonstrate maybe how water would flow currently and in the future. So. So I'm holding the paper this way.
Yeah.
Let me put it, it says north and straight up. All right, so Roy Arnold Boulevard is on the north side of our site. And I'm saying all of our water's going to go to the north in the north construction. So the way things flow right now, here's Ms. Young's property, there's her building right there. The way things flow right now, water that lands on this site will go directly toward her building and toward TW Logic Building, or TW Controls Building.
Current?
That way. Everything drains this way. The only thing that's going to drain that way in the future will be water that lands behind the buildings on this slope here.
That's what I was asking about, that slope.
As you can see, that area is less than ten percent of the site. So less than, and we're not paving that area, so it's going to stay perhaps.
It's not going to be runoff other than.
All of the water that lands inside the building areas is going to be directed onto the pavement, this horseshoe shape. The water that lands here will go down this side of the building. The water that lands here will go down here and out that way. And it can't pass through because there would be a six-inch tall curb here between the two buildings. And we have finished floor elevations and spot elevations on the pavement and on the finished floor of the buildings, and you can see that the pavement is all lower than the floor elevation of the building. So there's going to be, I think the worst case was like a three-inch elevation difference between the pavement and the building. So all of the buildings are up. And as you go toward the street, the building comes more out of the ground than it does at the higher point. So water goes that way, around that way. The only thing going to go, that's going to go to the south and to the east is what's going to land back here. I mean, it's almost kind of a foolproof way of building it to avoid damaging, damage to the immediate neighbors. And her building's a block building with this. There's an overhead door that's real close right in there, and I agree. I mean, we studied it real hard, Tom and I both did, because we didn't want to create more problem for what, you know, what appeared to be a problem already. They have some water that stands down there around their buildings already, and the overhead doors, you know, I can see how water could possibly get in under that overhead door real easily. But we were careful to plan how to do this project and not increase a problem for them. It should get better. If there is a problem, it should get better because the water, the amount of water going there is going to be bad.
That was going to be my question. You foresaw it being, staying the same, being better or worse?
It should get better. Now, I say those things, and the worst time for all of this is whenever construction's going on. Whenever construction's going on, you've got muddy water, you've got, we've got a plan, a BP plan to put up self-fence, but because the water naturally goes that way, I mean, if we get six inches of rain, muddy water's going to go right over top of that self-fence. That's just something that I can't design for. I mean, it's just all those things that Tom Byerly and whoever he gets to build it will have to do the best to manage it during construction. But it's kind of foolproof as far as protecting.
Well, I think those are, you know, two of my concerns, are the construction during that time. We've really not had, there could be some standing water there. We've really not had a problem. I guess maybe we looked out on that a little bit. But I'm also concerned and want to make sure that those buildings have gutters or something that's going to catch the water and downspouts. And it looks like it's that one pipe going out of there. So I just want to, you know, make sure that we're doing everything possible to collect the water that is there. And I think earlier, the curbing, what you said, was not exactly meant to stop the water, but to kind of direct it. And I don't know if that curbing could be any higher to just assist that if we do have a large deluge of rain. So those are a couple more of my questions. But I wasn't really able to, I'm not, I don't read site plots very well, so those are questions.
Do you want to address the gutters, downspouts?
The gutters and downspouts will all be directed onto the pavement, asphalt. That was our plan.
Are they going?
So they, any roof that's sloped toward the back, if it does end up being a gable roof that actually part of it goes toward the back, we'll pick those up with gutters. Downspouts will come around onto the pavement in front of the buildings. So that was kind of what we planned to do. It's not written on that plan anywhere, but I don't mind to make that a part of this discussion and conditions of approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, I do have one last question. So should water get there, then what recourse do I have but to deal then with the city and stormwater? Or, or what? Okay, thank you.
Gosh, you love these drainage discussions here. No, that's good. And I'll just let you know, there's no letters behind my name other than JR. He's engineer, and other folks have looked at it, but the city has drainage rules, stormwater rules. We've committed something on the site plan. If it doesn't perform, obviously, the recourse would be to come to the planning commission. What was approved of the site plan, there's an enforcement element that we would provide if something was not being complied with the site plan. But in a joint effort related to drainage, obviously, the city would be the other part of that. If there was a problem with the drainage, it didn't work, wasn't built right, there was a problem down the road, well, then we would go to the city. City has an ordinance, and the recourse would be you'd call City Public Works or you'd call the planning commission. And we'd evaluate whether it was a problem with the site plan or it was just truly a drainage-related issue, maybe in the design, which goes back to, that's why the city signs site plans and holds engineers accountable that way. I don't know what else to say, then there could be the odd thing that happens and some other kind of flood rule. But again, the city has ordinances for all those things on what they're trying to achieve with their drainage design and requirements. So if there was a problem, we'd go to Public Works or we'd come to the planning commission.
I guess my concern with that is that, you know, this has been grandfathered in since way back with urban renewal nineteen eighty-seven. So I guess my hope would be that as much as the city is focused on stormwater, and of course, we know all the problems in Lexington and EPA issues, et cetera, that they've, you know, now had to do, that maybe it would be my recommendation also that the city update their stormwater in some of those areas, even though that was grandfathered in thirty years ago at this point, but.
I think for our purposes, you know, if the city has an ordinance and they're meeting the ordinance, it'd be hard for, to vote against the project.
Right.
That's only my, I mean, I'm going to go by what the regulations are myself. I'm going to vote that way, no matter what my personal feelings are. So I think, you know, that has to be part of our discussion. No matter if you think it should be changed or not, that's something they have to do as a city.
Right.
Not as, ours is to make sure they're following the rules that are set forth at this point.
The stormwater ordinance was updated as a result of the EPA describing this as a phase two. The population of Danville is such that the EPA watches Danville and the EPA wants to see Danville monitor water quality. So they updated the stormwater ordinance. It was created, this stormwater manual, in I think two thousand eight. And they started assessing a stormwater tax for everyone in the city. So they're kind of up to date on, it's not like zoning ordinance and some of the other, the subdivision ratings, I guess, are kind of outdated that you have. But the city's stormwater ordinance is pretty.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, even if you're building this building someplace outside of the Roy Arnold area, you wouldn't change the design of the parking lot or the drainage or anything? It's just instead of draining into the Roy Arnold Boulevard, it would go into a detention basin for quantity control. But you wouldn't change how you're designing the parking lot itself and the pitch, and, or would you?
We're actually spending more money to grade the parking lot this way than if we were to try to put buildings on the natural ground that's there. So we're, he's bringing in dirt. We've done a grading plan that moves dirt from one side to the backside. You know, right now, the low spot on the site is close to her property. We're putting fillback. We're putting fill back there to make the water go toward Roy Arnold Boulevard, which is the opposite direction that it's currently going. So, Tom's willing to, Tom Byerly, the person who owns this property, and it, and it's mainly because of the concerns for stormwater, is willing to spend more money on construction to make it match this plan.
Our copy doesn't have signatures. Who at the city has signed off on this?
Our coffee.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
That motion passed, plans.
Any conditions or you're just making a motion to pass the-
Yeah.
Site plan as it is? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. Can you oppose?
Can I abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one extension.
I wonder if we are ready to discuss the Old Bridge application?
We can jump that in here if you would like to do that, yes. Did you lose something?
I lost a drawing, but, but a drawing that had Steve's comments on it. Sorry.
Steve Austin.
Okay, we're gonna go back to our tabled item number four on the subdivision approvals. Old Bridge Inc., subdivision plat on tractable land containing approximately 18 acres on Kentucky 34. I think our attorney, Mr. Smith, had a question.
We were looking into the existence of the company who's on the deed, and I think we have someone to speak to it.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The question that arose is that we have signatures on these plats from the owner of record, and it was showing that it was Old Bridge Inc.
That's right.
And per Secretary of State's records, that company does not currently exist. It was administratively dissolved. I wondered if you might speak to that?
There are two ways to dissolve corporation. One, the company itself files papers to have it dissolved. And we've not done that. We're in business, we still own real property. The other way is if you fail to file an annual report and pay fees, the Secretary of State can administratively suspend. I was unaware of this. Those papers do not go across my desk. They either go across Bruce Brown's desk or Les Lutton's desk. I would simply say that we're in business, that it can be remedied, that I would ask that you pass it on condition that I show proof to the commission that we are in good standing.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming down here.
Well, I didn't know I was coming, so, but thank you.
Uh, I don't, it's not a public hearing, so that, so. Okay. With that clarification, I guess we can make a motion contingent upon Old Bridge showing that they are in good standing with the Secretary of State-
That satisfies my concern.
-as a incorporation. Is there any time constraint on that? Well, we won't-
We won't record it.
Record it until that's being done. So, do we have a motion? A second. Okay, we had a motion, Wendy, and a second from your bed. All in favor? Alright, motion passes. Alright, going back to the other side of the page. Number two on a public hearing. Jerry and Michelle Fowler and Bridget Coulter have applied for approval of the site plan on tractable land containing approximately 1.571 acres located at 672 David Avenue. Property's own highway commercial.
Appreciate that. I'll be brief. Again, zone highway commercial, 1.57 acres, technical review, looked at the site plan. Everything met their requirements. Some housekeeping items had to be turned in, which have been turned in. The building under roof is 7,673 square feet. The drawing shows 43 potential parking spaces. The zoning ordinance only required 25.5 spaces. We did get a landscape plan and they gave us kind of a floor plan, which you put in your packet of the building. The property owners are building the office building on behalf of another client. And again, it's on David Avenue. If you guys can drive out there, it's, the site's gonna accommodate, building parking, landscape drainage. Again, technical review, looked at it and everything was, met their approval. The property owner, Mr. Fowler, is here. If you guys have any questions for him. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the whole site plan?
Commissioner Manin makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Boyd, seconds. All in favor? Motion passes. I warned you. Okay, item number three. Michael McAfee filed for amendment to, to the future land use map from moderate density residential to mixed use residential. Property at Zero Stanford Road.
Thank you, guys. This is our first official future land use map amendment. And you guys have all this at your seat, so you won't have to spin around. This is more, again, for the public on this case, and I'll reference the staff report. But we had an application filed on May 23rd. The applicant, Michael McAfee, location of property is Zero Stanford Road. And again, the drawing's in your packet, but that's basically easiest way to describe it across from Pioneer Playhouse, but it does kind of go around and have two places that touches Stanford Road. The property is a zero address because it's undeveloped at this time. It's 55.62 acres. It's currently, it's land use, it's vacant. And as you heard, the current future land use category is moderate density residential. And I want to be kind of clear on one issue there, that's zoning. The moderate density residential was relabeled with, with our conference of plan amendment a month or so ago. So what was prior was multifamily. So the actual boundary of the flume category, the way it lays on the property, hasn't changed. The color hasn't changed. We just relabeled it from multifamily to moderate density, which pretty much allows multifamily plus single family. So what the applicant is proposing is to modify the future land use map from moderate density to mixed use residential. And I think it's interesting on page one, the staff report to zoning history is really where this goes. And I'll go backwards on the map there. Agriculture, well, obviously was the original zoning, but the property currently has various zoning districts, including agriculture, highway commercial, industrial, business development, and floodplain. So again, you can see on that drawing right there on the screen or in your packet, that we, the property has industrial, ag, commercial, even a little sliver of NCC, but that's probably out of bounds from this development, and floodplain. So the property owner is considering a development proposal. When they came in and met and they talked about potentially developing this property, they have commercial already along the high, along Stanford Road, and they may do some commercial development, but they didn't have the depth that they desired. They have no desire to do industrial development on the property. The ag is sort of stuck in the middle, and then there's some floodplain. So before we could zone the property or bring a zone change forward, our recommendation was you need to amend the future land use map, and let's talk generally about what you guys want to do. So I think they made a smart choice in picking mixed use residential because that is kind of this new flex category that would basically relabel the property to allow commercial or multifamily, which is probably what their plan's gonna be. But, but short term, I think what the developer wants to do is market some commercial lots along Stanford Road. But the first step now with the amendment last month or so is to amend the future land use map. So again, going back to the future land use map, again, you can see the moderate density is, the whole property's got a big chunk of floodplain on it. And again, this property goes over here, goes all the way around. This is all moderate. This is the city's property. And this is the applicant's 55 acres. So he'd be requesting this all go to the mixed use residential. And I'm gonna show you something here that is conceptual, that it wasn't in your packet, but this was the first draft of a concept plan that they turned in, but it's probably gonna change. And again, the goal possibly is to maybe do some commercial up here and somewhere there'd be a split in the zoning line to probably multifamily. But the current flume category says all multifamily, and the developer is not interested in doing multifamily in this area. He, he'd like to do some kind of phasing, maybe some commercial, maybe some office, maybe some mix, and then transition to some kind of multifamily. None of those plans have been ironed out. This is just truly a conceptual plan, so we could see where the floodplain was. And since that time, we're having some discussions about potentially how we could connect some stub street connections in here. So maybe there's a better way we could connect a potential roadway to J E Woods and flow on over to Second Street. All of these are in the preliminary design phase, but we wanted to show you why the flume was needed, because right now, the developer has commercial, and he could go in there and cut these lots off right now and sell those as commercial lots, but his desire is not to do all of this in apartments. He wants to do some kind of mixed development in phases, and we'd be bringing you guys a zone change at some point in the future. There's traffic studies to talk about, there's access to talk about, drainage, stub streets, where we make those zoning splits. But obviously, the first step is to fix the flume. And that's what's before you today. It is interesting, and I'll jump on past page three of your staff report, in the conference of plan review, there's some general goals that, that pretty much put this right online about that we have land uses, that we redevelop a smart way in our county, and mixed use would be that. But it's interesting, the way we look at flume amendments, as you all know, we put some categories on what the flume, what's the trigger point to amend the flume and what's the, the basis to be reviewed. The applicant made the request that this was a correction of inconsistencies or mapping errors contained within the flume as opposed to the compatibility assessment. That's on page five of your staff report. I thought that was interesting choice, because initially I thought, hey, if we see a flume amendment, they'll turn into compatibility, that they'll have a design. But in this case, the design's not done. What the applicant has indicated is it is the presence of the zoning issue that is the inconsistency. So it says inconsistencies or mapping errors contained in the flume. In the flume, the argument, I guess that the applicant's making is the 2017 flume category, or whether you call it multifamily, moderate density, that's the error or inconsistency when the base zoning was commercial, agriculture, industrial, and floodplain. I guess I assumed that we wouldn't see too many flume amendments making the, the mapping error argument, but it makes sense. And their narrative went to the, spelled exactly that out, and I put their narrative that they submitted on page, starts at the bottom of page five, and I'll read it. In their application, they said, "The area along Stanford Road has different future land use on each side of the road, several different existing land uses, and multiple zoning classifications on the road," and obviously on their property. "The request to mixed use residential better defines this area for a mixed of commercial projects and multifamily development that is desired on the 55 acre property." So what they're saying is they just want to swap it from mul, moderate to mixed and bring you a plan at some point in the future. But it is interesting, this first cap, first application we see goes right at the heart of this. Most of this, most of this part of Stanford is commercial. There's industrial on top of the school property. There's industrial on vacant land. There's agricultural slivers still stuck there. I guess I didn't look at that, and, you know, there's gen, single family on the school. This, this is a classic cleanup area for zoning and future land use. If you look at future land use, we got low density, commercial, multifamily, and of course, some public. So the applicant is just simply wanting to relabel their property that they feels more consistent for their development pattern in the future. This makes this kind of a, a housekeeping cleanup exercise, really is what this is. And again, their intention is to bring you a zone change request at some point in the future. The way our process is set up now, they could have brought both today. But again, I think their concept plan was just that, a concept plan. It, it's gonna change, it's gonna be fine tuned. I'm not sure which one of those lots are gonna be commercial or office or multifamily or combined. They're still working with Kendall on that, and today's just changing the flume as a housekeeping exercise. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Our attorney may want to jump in there, and I know the applicant's here. And Michael's in the back, back there. I'm glad to answer any questions you guys might have. Michael, anything you want to add, or Kendall? Or anyone in the audience, questions maybe?
Any questions from the audience?
I would like to know how that this will affect the residents of Duncan Hill.
Come on up to the mic if you want.
Would you mind coming up, sir, introducing yourself? Can you state your, your name and address?
Yes, my name is Rodney Dunn, and I'm a resident of Duncan Hill. And I got this letter in the mail, and I would just like to know how it would affect the residents of Duncan Hill.
Okay, somebody want to address that?
So, in general, the future land use map at this point, in my opinion, is not gonna affect Duncan Hill a ton. What they're asking for is to relabel the category to allow them to bring a future development in. It's the future development that potentially could affect Duncan Hill. And to go to their site plan, again, conceptually, at this point, the effect would be if they were to build apartments or commercial. There could be kind of incidental development procedures, view sheds. I'm not sure it directly is gonna affect Duncan Hill. The road connections might open up opportunities to J E, but in general, what's gonna affect the community in general is there potentially could be commercial development someday on the road. There may be services that folks in Duncan Hill support, maybe don't support. There could be more apartments. And to be completely honest, when you have new developments, the, the effect could be, the negative effect could be traffic. Could be more traffic on Stanford Road someday. If this all develops out to the developer's proposal, obviously, we're gonna have a lot more cars flowing on to Stanford Road going in various directions. That obviously affects every neighbor and every neighborhood in that general area. And I'll go back to the zoning map. So, you know, you, that, that's always gonna be a spinoff effect, but direct, I, I can't speak to anymore until I really know what the zoning proposal is and what they tell me they're gonna do. And I'm just throwing terms out here, you know, are we gonna see fast food, or these banks, or these apartments? What, what's the plan? Then we would know more. This proposal basically starts the discussion of them moving forward with a development that I think could affect pro or con to some degree.
Anything from this point would have to come back to us for approval?
You got a letter, it's a good question. You got a letter because you touched the property.
Right.
So if a zone change was submitted next month, the next month, you would also get a letter saying the applicant's decided to zone the property, and then we'd have more specifics of the actual zoning and the development potential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name and address.
Neil Ackland, Winterhawk Road. Where is the bike path and the walking path relative to that property?
It's located on the property, and you can actually see it. It's in the floodplain. It starts there at the, near the end of J E Wood Drive, and it just runs around the south part of the property, just north of Bartrun. That's, that's a bike path, yes.
Okay.
It goes all the way around to Stanford Road.
So it's not, the, the proposed development doesn't seem to, to cross it and interfere with it?
Right now, what you see is the road would stub right down there to it. I, I think, perfect scenario, and again, we, we need to have a lot more discussions. I, I think perfect scenario, and again, we, we need to have a lot more discussions. You got J.E. Woods and again, if you look at the city's right of way, which you can see on this map. So again, you can't see the pavement, but you can see the city owns, here's J.E. Woods. This, the pavement actually ends, but the city has the right of way. The perfect scenario, what we'd like to talk to developer about, again, this shows where the pavement kinda ends, but the city has, is to make a connection, make these streets connect and there'd be ability to get from Second all the way over to Stamford. We'd have a nice way that if there were a commercial here, folks on this side of town could get there without maybe going around and coming down the other roads, that we interconnect our roadways and then, I mean, tying in sidewalks, paths, whatever, you know, just kinda takes us to the next step, big picture, but there may have, this may have to be obviously disturbed, uh, laid out in a different fashion so we could maybe continue some trail connection, whatever the city desires, but the goal would be get the roads to connect sidewalks and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, the developer could choose to come down here and just do a cul-de-sac at the end. Again, this is preliminary, but I think the big goal would be, it'd be great if we could figure out how to connect those two streets, open up a development corridor, and, and I think it would probably add value to all those lots and give us different development potential there, but it's his decision to bring you all forward, apply it and the zone change at some point in the future.
We have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the flume change.
A second. Motion, Commissioner Boyd has made a motion for approval, seconded by? Okay, Vince, as Commissioner DiMartino is, seconding it. Do we have all an approval? Okay, that brings us to number four. Uh, now Boyle County Plan and Zoning Commission has filed an application to amend articles one through eight and appendix A, B, C, and D, the subdivision regulations.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Let you take over.
You heard Kendall allude to earlier, our subdivision regs are very old and he's being, he's being kind to us. And as you all know, um, on the planning commission staff to do list was looking at the sub regs, looking at the comp plan, looking at the zoning ordinance. The comp plan, in my opinion, uh, we tackled just behind a month or so with the chapter nine amendment. Um, the sub regs I've been working on for a while. Um, the advisory committee's been hard at work on these two and we're bringing them to you guys today with the option to revise the sub regs, kinda in a reorganization fashion and I'm gonna show you that, or we can do them article by article, or we could do part, none, whatever the planning commission chooses. I wanna point out the planning commission does have final authority on the subdivision regs and I'm gonna show you that in just a second, but, um, and I'm gonna talk to you why they're needed, but I thought this was interesting, this first slide up on the screen here, uh, Mary Beth sent me an article, she knew I was working on the sub regs and had been, and she sent me an article and I just thought this title was just too cool, I had to put it up on the screen and it's someone else's cover, it's the, it's the document Strong Towns and, and I've read the article, um, but the, the title was just great. It says, "You care about the subdivision regulations, you just don't know it yet."
Yeah.
And it's perfect, um, because what my cover, the first slide I had was this, which is why subdivision regulations, but I had to throw that on there because I thought that was pretty timed, perfect timing, because the subdivision regs don't get a lot of consideration. They're not the zoning ordinance, it's not where the sign stuff is, it's not where setbacks are, it's not the conference of plan and where flumes are and big pretty maps. It's a set of minimum standards that tell us how to build roads, deal with drainage, plats, signatures on plats. It's not stuff that gets people's attention, but it, in my opinion, could be the most important document we have operate under and use daily. And I use it daily and you guys, obviously, are using it monthly, semi-monthly, technical reviews using it, but most of citizens don't know what the sub regs are until they have to file a plat. Most developers know what they are because they build streets and whatnot. This document, and I'm just gonna go through some basic stuff and then walk you through the chapters and you guys will take it wherever you want to, because this is a lot of stuff and I, and I'm gonna explain to you what I'm, I'm asking the planning commission to consider. But the slide here says, "Where does the planning commission get its authority?" It's straight out of the KRS, just like everything else. Uh, KRS 10273 says, "If you have planning commission and you have a comp plan and you can have sub regs." Just wanna mention there that, as you all realize, not all the counties in Kentucky have joint planning commissions, do planning and zoning at all, or have subdivision regulations. And I just wanna point out, in those counties that don't do what we do here in Boyle County, if you wanna buy a piece of property, you buy it by deed. You go to your neighbor and say, "Hey, I'd like to buy that seven acres," and you describe it, maybe hire a surveyor, maybe you don't. And you guys make a real estate transaction, you buy a piece of property and there's no plats and there's no reparations. You buy property by deed and there might be a survey. Planning commissions, formal counties that have conference of plans, we plat property, we record property, and what we're really doing is protecting the property owners and the citizens. So that if I buy an eight acre tract from Vince, it's been surveyed, it's been platted, it's been recorded, and I'm buying eight acres from Vince. I'm not buying 6.2 acres. There was a plat you guys approved today where a neighbor was selling a piece of property to a neighbor. That original property, there was a piece of that bought by deed and the initial neighbor thought, the initial property owner thought he had eight acres. Turns out he had 7.6 something, something, something. He didn't have eight acres because he bought a piece of property by deed, it was never platted, it was conveyed, then ultimately now it's been resurveyed, replatted, and now being conveyed, turns out it's not eight acres. That is the basis of what we do with plating, is we're trying to protect the citizens and real estate transactions and the conveyance of property. 10277 is a big deal, you guys. It says commission approval for all subdivisions. So everything's a subdivision, two or more lots, moving lot lines around. And it also says that if someone builds a street, a public street, that ultimately is gonna be the city or the county's property, it's your all's responsibility to get a plat and to have standards and to review those standards, and if it's built right, as you, we just talked about earlier, after 45 days, the government has to take that as their street. So that's a big deal, what we're doing, if you think about it. We are setting a set of standards to record that if you build this, the government will take it and maintain it, uh, forever. And that's, that's the other part of the sub regs. What can sub regs ultimately govern? You guys know this, you've been on the commission, uh, obviously cutting off lots, plats, procedures, infrastructure, public roads and all those specs, utilities, signatures. You guys know what's in your sub regs, you use them every month, but KRS 10281 is very specific on what can be in subdivision regulations. So the word public infrastructure comes up and I'm gonna point that out because again, in the construction realm of things, going back to Hunt Farm, other things like that, when the developer says, "I'm gonna build public infrastructure, I'm gonna build a public street that ultimately the city of Danville or Boyle County is gonna own," we set, have a set of standards that you build it to these standards, we'll take it, uh, and we'll maintain it forever and it becomes their asset. What is public infrastructure is interesting, it is more than just streets. It's streets, intersections, access, site distance, obviously sidewalks, curb, gutter, ditches, grading, water, hydrants, sewer, septic, there, there's public infrastructure all over developments and you guys know this. The sub regs govern all that stuff. Um, aspects of construction, construction plan, storm drainage, circulation, how we install streets, how we build streets, the timing, completion, and of course, acceptance is all in our sub regs. So this last slide, and I'll show you what we're doing, this was just me just sort of brainstorming here a little bit. What are elements of a great development in our community? And obviously, it's a development that uses existing resources, we have good designed streets, we have good connectivity, we have good compatibility, we've got great infrastructure, we've got real places and developments, we have good combination of land use and we have authentic design. That's what our sub regs is intended to assure, that we have good development, good design, uh, built to a minimum set of standards. So it gets back to our sub regs and why I think they need it updated. Number one, they need a reorganization and I'll explain that in a second, and I don't think that's a real wor- word our attorney can tell us there. I put document readability, I don't know if readability is a real wor- word, but it's my word. It's hard to read our document, it's hard to understand our sub regs, they were done in 1990. They have been amended dozens of times by resolution of the planning commission that were never codified into the book. So if today you wanted to know about our subdivision regulations and you open the book, you look at the 1990's language, you have to know that there was a resolution passed in 1989, or, I'm sorry, 1999, or 2009. It's probably in the back of the book under a resolution titled Resolution, September, 1999. How you know whether it's about drainage or sidewalks or survey caps, whatever, pin caps, you just would have to read the resolution. Our document is hard to understand the rules when it's not in the right chapter, under the right heading. That's a big part of what you have in front of you is just reorganizing the book and putting all the pieces in the right chapters, plus making it read better, streamlining it. The other bullets, better construction oversight and practices goes right to the heart of Hunt Farms and other default projects, better, modern bond management, establishment of construction contracts, how we unit price bonds, estimates, construction plan contents, open space, installation, timing, completion, warranty acceptance, on and on and on. All of these things are mostly in chapter three of the regs now. So this gets to what I was laying in front of you and this, this looks pretty tricky to read, but this basically says what is laying in front of you. There's now seven articles proposed of the sub regs, there were eight. And in one, what I'm showing is it's now one plus what was in seven. Two is two plus what was in three in the old regs. Article three is what was in three, four, 4.5, and five. Again, taking items that were spread out all over the book or in resolutions and putting them all in one place. So it just codifies the book, it deletes one article on PUDs that are no longer in existence in our community or have been for a number of years. It deletes all the appendices but keeps two of them, moves them in different parts of the book and it would repeal all those prior resolutions because they're now either codified if they're necessary, or the things that were duplication or have gone away, uh, they're gone. So that gets us to the articles and I'll walk you through any, you guys have had them. I will mention advisory committee did their job, some heavy lifting, they met two plus hours the other day, went through every single chapter. We had a lot of discussion, a lot of question, there were some citizens in the audience. What I presented to you was each article in underlined strikeout fashion, everything that's being added is underlined, everything's being repealed is in strikeout. Um, and again, lot of this is similar stuff reorganized, but I wanna point out five and six. Five and six aren't changing. Our prior article six is stay in article six and article five was kind of, because we deleted some articles, was a sort of placeholder, we're putting in what was in appendix D, B and D into five. Those are kinda the to do list for the future right here is we're, we still need to fix five and six, but those are the actual standards, how thick the pavement would be, how deep the rock is when we build a street, how wide the sidewalks are, where we do sidewalks. At this point, it, it wasn't appropriate to amend five or six until the public works guys on the city and county side can get in a room with some developers, engineers, and us really hash out what our design standard should be, or do we keep six just like it is? So what we're proposing to amend is one, two, three, and four, and really seven. And it's really more housekeeping procedural stuff, what's on the plat, how we do construction, how we approve plats, but we're not proposing to amend anything in appendix B, D, or six, which are the actual design standards for pavement, thicknesses, roads, construction, et cetera.
Steve, are, are you adding anything new?
There's new stuff in there and I'll point some of that out as we walk through, there's a lot of new things in there, ton of new stuff, but it's not all reorganizing and I think that was what was underlying strike through and I'll point out a few, but, um, and I'll just go back to this chart and we'll just walk through, if you guys want, I'll go through one real quick. Nothing in one, for example, is really new, one just was articles one and seven. We had kind of our penalty sections in seven and our general stuff in one, it's now just in one.
Steve, would now be an appropriate time for a comment or you wanna save that?
Yeah.
After you get through your summary?
We can do whatever, comments from anyone?
Okay.
Audience or attorney?
Section 1.5, which deals with exceptions, is the one thing that caught my mind.
Mm-hmm.
That seems to be a place where there might be some back and forth between a, a developer and the planning commission. And I was concerned about its discussion of maintaining the original intent of these regulations where that might be kind of nebulous, wonder if we might strike that. And I have some proposed wording, unless...
Well, let me just generally tell you where I came from that. Um, we have some exception language in our current document now, I left that similar. What a lot of planning commissions tend to do is grant waivers or variances or exceptions. There's hardships that happen, these are a minimum set of standards and it's not unusual that something happens, for example, like today. County didn't require sidewalk requirements, but the developer put sidewalks forward. There was a change, things changed, there was exceptions, there was hardships, construction plans were submitted. I left the language more generic where if there's an exception, that we could figure it out and work through it, but some planning commissions have formal waivers like variances. You have to come actually apply for a waiver to the regulations and some communities let you vary the regulations. I just left it generic to say that we could vary these regulations if the original intent was maintained. Again, that's subjective and you can fill that in, but I think the goal is, I can tell you, I haven't done that, I think ever, in my 20 years. Most developers read the document and say, "If the streets are this," we don't tend to waiver or vary street standards, but we tend to waiver, vary, maybe if a plat is supposed to be required to be filed, maybe we take it a day late. The waivers and variations to the procedures I've typically seen are maybe what ends up on a plat, maybe signature block didn't get worded exactly like we liked, or maybe it wasn't filed on time, but I've never been inclined to waiver anything because the original tent's pretty black and white when you have a set of standards on how we build a street. But I'd be glad to, whatever you think needs to go in there, but I don't wanna get into the process of formal waivers or formal variances because I just think it adds a lot of bureaucracy into the process. I don't wanna see us have to make a applicant, file another application to get a plat recorded. I guess that's where I'm going with it.
Right, and I wouldn't want to unnecessarily formalize and I, I have some proposed language.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think it does change it extravagantly, but in the third line, it starts with talking about board of adjustments shall have the power. I have it reading, "Shall have the power to grant an exception from these regulations if no other ordinances or local government, of local government are violated and the exception is the minimum exception necessary to provide relief from the demonstrated hardship." That adds something about minimum necessary and it takes out the original intent.
Does the BOA formally review a variance application or an accepts? I mean, what, how to, should it say the word variance then?
This wouldn't affect...
Should it say that they have the power to vary because they hear, um, how would we, how do we use the word exceptions in the board of adjustments realm? I'm used to the planning commission granting the exception and the BOA granting the variance if we did them either direction.
If that's the concern, then we can just take out and/or the Danville County Board of Adjustments.
It's where the planning commission feels best, I'm good on whatever on that then.
This, this doesn't really seem applicable to the board anyhow, would be my reasoning behind that.
That was my question also, Steve. If, if the two disagreed, then which one has jurisdiction?
Well, I, again, I was, I was looking at if they, someone wanted to file a formal variance on the sub regs, let's say some standard, I don't wanna build a street 24 foot wide, I'd like to do it 23 and a half. The BOA is the natural place to do a variance request, yet you all have the authority to do waivers, I guess, if we wanted to put waivers or exceptions into the process. That's what you're gonna see is someone wants to do an alleyway a tad bit different than the design standard, say, or a street width. Do you wanna send folks to the BOA to do formal variances?
We have to decide what are we doing?
Or you do?
Give it an exception or they have to get a variance.
Or get a variance. And I was trying to leave it kinda open to do either and Henry's right, I think it probably ought to be one or the other.
Commissioner Boyd, the question of jurisdiction is whoever the applicant has put in their application with, whether it's the board or the planning commission. There's still separate provisions in the zoning ordinance that talk about variances and I think that won't be affected by what we do with the section 1.5.
Good stuff. It's your all's decision.
Okay, could you give us your cleaned up version of that now?
Starting in the second line, "The Danville County, the Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission shall have the power to grant an exception from these regulations if no other ordinances of local government are violated and the exception is the minimum exception necessary to provide relief from the demonstrated hardship."
So you're leaving, you're taking out the board of adjustments because the board adjustments were, if they were involved, they'd have to file for a variance anyway.
Right, and they can still do that under the zoning ordinance.
Are you leaving the last sentence, the financial disadvantage?
Yes, I, I had no... Yes, I had no quibble with that.
Well, one, one technical thing, I, I guess the issue is, the zoning ordinance does allow variances, yet the zoning ordinance makes no reference to the subdivision regulations or design standards in the subdivision regulations.
Right.
So that's, that's always been the problem, is if we're going to vary the subregs, who varies them, and what, the zoning ordinance does not mention what subdivision regs anywhere. So, so again, if someone came in and said, I don't want to build a twenty-four foot wide street, I'd like to do twenty-two, we're always going to do it as an exception and bring it here. Because I, I don't know how we'd take that case to the BOA, because what are they reviewing? They have no authority to review the subregs unless we give them authority.
Right, I'm...
The zoning ordinance doesn't do that today, but if we do the amendment to the zoning, we can fix that, but today, the BOA has no tie-in to this document at all.
I, I don't see any particular harm in leaving questions of street width to this body only, if that's...
I agree.
Okay with the planning commission?
We're taking the Board of Adjustments out, because they wouldn't be really in it anyway.
At this point, they wouldn't.
It's, it's uncommon for a Board to deal with subregs.
And we're taking out the original intent part.
Yep. Sounds good.
So, do you think that's workable?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Does that meet the criteria you were trying to?
Uh, trust me, we're not going to use this very often, it's not in our best interest to make exceptions to a minimum set of standards, if we trust the standards.
Do we need to, we, we're just gonna make note of that, and then pass us all?
Yep, we'll keep on going, or however you guys want to, sure. Henry, anything else?
So we're gonna make that change?
Change, yeah, sure.
That was my question.
One, okay. So, and Article Two's interesting, uh...
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Is Junction City coming back into planning and zoning?
I have no clue.
Well, everything in here says Junction City, includes Junction City.
Well, I think, the, the reason I put Junction City in here, under the authority and the amendments, because under the state law, subregs are countywide. I don't know how subregs are not countywide, um, and I referenced who our county is, and who all the cities are as governments. Today, we have a unique circumstance, that Junction City is not part of the planning commission under a court order, but the statute's still the same, that says you have countywide subdivision regulations that you all pass, you can't pass them for Danville, then Boyle County, then, I mean, they're countywide subregs. And what, what Chapter One says, is we have countywide subregs, and our county is made up of unincorporated Bull, Danville, Perryville, and Junction. It doesn't really mean anything more than that, because there's still a court order that says Junction doesn't participate in this planning body. But, what I, Junction has told me, Junction City, is they still adhere to the subregs. So I guess where we're gonna be at is, are they following the ninety regs, or will they follow the new amended regs that you all, if you pass them, and how they follow them's totally up to them today? I mean, if someone does something in Junction City, it does not come before you guys. But someday, if we fix that, it's already gonna be blended in to work.
I think it's our responsibility to cover the whole county, if they choose not to do it, I mean, that's for other entities to determine.
And, and I don't want to be disingenuous to them, not one bit, because we've had great conversations, and I think someday we'll be there, but I am curious how the state law very clearly says subdivision regs are clearly under the authority of the planning commission. You guys draft them, you modify them, you edit them, none of the other governments touch them, that's the planning commission's authority. They're countywide rules, and I don't know how a court told Junction City, you can pull out of the planning commission, and do your own planning and zoning, or not do your own planning and zoning, I don't know how they could still do plats. Because plats, very clearly in the state law, is they have to have planning commission approval, they have to get recorded in the courthouse, and I don't know how plats are being handled in Junction City, if they're being done by deed, if there's surveys, if Junction has a review at the city council, or if the survey's carried from the, the mayor's office to the clerk's, I don't know how plats are being recorded, but we have countywide subregs, and have had countywide subregs, yet a court gave Junction ability to do their own thing. So how are plats actually being created, conveyed, and recorded in their jurisdiction? I don't have that answer, and I don't know how that could even exist.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know how it exists under the KRS. So they may be just doing them by deed, which, that's fine, you know, so...
You want to answer that?
Plats, and if you have a变更 vans, or a change in plats, in Junction City, the mayor signs them, and then the owner is willing to take the plat to the courthouse and have it recorded. But there are other counties in Kentucky that have either citywide planning and zoning, and no countywide planning and zoning, so...
But the plat still goes to the planning commission in every circumstance, and the state...
Not, not in the counties, if they don't have planning and zoning.
Well, then, like I said, if you have planning and...
Just ask the question.
Yeah. We have countywide planning and zoning, and you, we have a joint planning commission that, you either have an independent or a joint, this is getting a little off track. In our county, we have a joint planning commission, and we had one government pull-out, so in a sense, what we have is an independent unit and a joint unit, yet they didn't follow the protocol set in the statute on how you create an independent unit, or pull-out. There was a court action, and the court decided they can do their own thing, as, but are they an independent planning unit, or are they just a city doing planning and zoning, which goes out of bounds of everything in the KRS, but if a court gave them that authority, then they have that authority. And they're probably doing it exactly right, but everything you read in the statute says the planning commission approves all plats, preliminary and final, if you have planning and zoning. So, at this point, it, to me, this isn't really an issue, because we're not going to change anything in Junction City, nor are we proposing, our document just references, they're a city in our county, they are a legal incorporated area, we have countywide zoning, we have countywide regs, and hopefully, they'll follow them, and if they choose not to, then I think they have that authority under the court order, and Henry, you can jump in there, because it's very complicated.
I haven't read the order, the general canon is that where a county has ordinances or regs, and the city doesn't have anything more restrictive than the county applies broadly, but like I said, I haven't seen the court order.
Hopefully, we fix all this in the future, um, but, you know, if I bought a tract in Junction City, I bought five acres from someone, and they surveyed it, and said, here's your property, I guess, knowing about, I'd want to know who's approving it. I think it would be the Junction City Council would look at the plat, and then they would, but then the question is, is it going to the courthouse and being recorded, like other plats, process-wise? I, I don't know, they're, they're doing plats separate, and there may not be that many that it's been an issue. So, so that, that's one. Jumping back to two, uh, one thing was interesting in our old regs, you guys, is, we called things majors and minors, we're really gonna have to think differently about plats, now everything's a plat under this revision. What majors and minors are gonna do is, if we ever get into five and six, we'll decide when small plats do certain things, and big plats do other things, but in general, the statute's always been clear, everything's a subdivision under the state law, and it gets preliminary approval, and it gets final approval. And in our model here, preliminary approvals, technical review, final approvals, planning commission, nothing's really changed in there, just everything's a subdivision, or a nonconforming lot of record, or a farm plot. Article three is big stuff, and what, uh, our Commissioner touched on, just mentioned, this is some new stuff. This is construction-based stuff, this is process-based stuff, this is stuff that we don't want to ever do like we did in the past, as far as holding bonds and cashing bonds, but I, I told the Advisory Committee, I worked hard on this chapter, um, it's A through, it's got some sub-numbers, obviously, but it's A through Q, I believe? A through Q, in three and a half pages, is all the process of filing the plat, planning commission's review of the plat, technical reviews of role in the plat, turning up construction plans, how we bond construction, how we start construction, how we oversee construction, how we determine a project's default, how long we give a developer to get subdivisions built, what happens at the call, how we accept the property, and a new provision on the warranty provision, that after the project's done, built, and accepted, there's still a warranty option that protects the government and the taxpayers even further. Yes, sir?
I had just a couple more things on one, before you started.
Yep, sure.
I'm sorry. In section one point one, on page one, dash three.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, under A, shouldn't it be any person or entity, whether they're any person...
Where you at on one, I'm sorry, what page?
Page one point one, dash three, under section one point one-one, A.
I think it's just a title.
Any person or entity, instead of, of entity?
Yes.
And then my other question, more important, what's the difference between A and B?
I just lost you again, what page are you on, on that?
One dash three.
Okay, hold on a second.
Section one point one-one.
Uh, well, hey, that's, section one point one-one, um, what's the difference between...
A and B?
Well, it's right out of state law. The difference is, again, Henry, you may jump in here, it's exactly right out of the KRS, and it's worded, A basically says that, I mean, any person who violates the provisions of the subregs...
And then the other one says the same thing about regulations.
I mean, Henry, that's right out of the KRS, I guess it's, I'm not sure what the situat, what the violation would be, verse one versus the other, but it's worded right out of one hundred nine nine one.
Um, yeah, it looked at first to me like it was saying, one was the statutes, and one was the regs, but A deals with both statutes and regs.
Violation, it's right out of the KRS, it's been, it's old language, and, and it's interesting, these are criminal penalties still, in this, under the subregs. It'd be nice if we had civil penalties for violations, but KRS one hundred nine nine one tells us, this is how we do violations, um...
This section, you didn't change anything, you just, you simply are quoting the KRS.
It's right out of the KRS, and they haven't changed that, I don't know the year that this was put in the book, but last stuff has, says nineteen sixty-six in it, and this is what one hundred nine nine one says.
Well, there are some, there are some small differences between this and nine nine one.
Well, I don't think I put D in there.
Right.
Because it was really not related.
In nine nine one, it talks about anyone who violates the zoning statutes, or any regulations adopted pursuant thereto, and then, the second part says, any agent who violates this chapter.
Which it says any person, owner, or agent.
Right.
So the first one says entity, and the other one says person, owner, agent. It goes back to Commissioner Boyd's question, the difference is, one says person, I guess it's dealing with entities, and others dealing with individuals. And that may be why the penalties are, but they're kind of similar. I've always giggled at this chapter, because if you look at C, two, it also says that the planning commission may appoint enforcement officers who have the authority to issue citations, violations, although we do criminal summons, because these are criminal, which the officer has observed, but shall not have the power of peace officers to make arrests or carry deadly weapons, so, we can't carry weapons as code enforcement officers, but...
I have no problem with that.
Okay, I've always thought they should revise that, that's just me personally, but...
I have a question behind you.
Yep.
Yes, I'd like to go back to Article Two a minute.
Well, we'll clarify this, do, do we want to, just, me, just make sure I get them exactly as the KRS, I mean, that was the goal, is to make it mirror one hundred nine nine one.
Right, and there, there are a couple of small changes in these statutory numbers and a few things, but yeah, if, if you make it mirror nine nine one, we're doing no harm that way, so...
Okay, sure, go ahead, come on up.
Uh, I've gotten loud enough, of course. In section two point two subdivisions, the first paragraph, the next to the last line, it says, not involving new street or, shall not require a plat. Any survey done requires a plat by states, by surveying standards. Also, in section two point three, number D...
We'll, we'll go back, on two point two, what, what's...
Two point two, the first paragraph, second line from the box, from the, from that paragraph. The division of agricultural zone, land, and parcel...
Yeah, twenty acres.
...of twenty acres, not involving a new street, a new, or access, shall not require a plat.
Yeah.
Any survey that is done requires a plat.
Not under the state law, it, you still, the agricultural...
On the survey standards, you have to prepare a plat.
Sure, I understand, but the state law allows the conveyance by deed on what's considered agricultural use tracks, and what most counties do is determine is that the five acre, ten acre, or twenty acre, we'll take them all by plat, but the state law says that technically, you guys can't require plats if they're truly agricultural use.
Steve, my understanding of the exemption was that it was not, that you didn't need a plat, but that the plat didn't require planning commission approval?
Approval.
Is that...
That's true.
That's not what it says.
Sure, I'm just saying that, that's...
I understand that, but I am reading it as it says, not as the intent.
Okay.
If you want it, for that to be the intent, then you need to say that.
Well, the, the whole paragraph basically says, you come before the planning commission, and say you apply for, and again, I guess we'll just add that, and require a plat, nor be approved by the planning commission, but I think what we're saying is, we're fine with some properties being sold at some trigger point that doesn't need your approval, if they're truly agriculture.
What if you replaced "shall not require a plat" with "shall not require planning commission approval," would that more...
If it's that or require planning and zoning approval, I don't care.
It's, is that...
If it's not require planning and zoning approval, it's gotta have a plat.
It's just...
I don't care what it's, a, a, a piece of granite postage stamp.
Right.
Yeah, but what the, what the state law says is, and I understand what you're saying, but if I own a tract, a hundred acres in the state of Kentucky under the statute, and it's truly agricultural, I don't have to go get it surveyed even. Now, they're saying the survey requirement, but if I choose not to survey my, I can still sell property by deed in the state of Kentucky.
That's not, that, you're, you're, that's not...
I understand what we're saying here, but that's why it exists in subregs, because every planning commission has to deal with, at what threshold are properties conveyed in hundred acre and five hundred acre tracts under the statute, that are not surveyed and not platted? But if it is what she's saying, it requires a plat.
If it comes before this board, it will require a plat.
But not everything that's conveyed has to be surveyed.
That's, I didn't say anything about that.
That's, that's the difference. So you got three things happening out there in the room.
Why are we even dealing with contracts of sale? Because that didn't have anything to do with us.
Not really, except it's always conditioned on plat approvals, a lot of times.
What is?
Uh, folks will make offers and say, can, like, today, there were several plats in there that were, there were real estate contracts that were contingent on your all's approval.
If they're not conveyed, yes, but if it's, if it's a, a farm that somebody says, I want to buy whatever you've got, regardless of acres, that's their problem, but if it is a division of land, then it does require a plat.
Mr. Smith, is there some wording that you could suggest that would satisfy this discussion?
Ms. Sis, I, you correct me if this is not addressing your concern, but I think it does, if we change this to say, instead of "shall not require a plat," just make it say "shall not require planning commission approval," I think that's what case law requires, and I think that's, i- if you're saying that this is stripping away a requirement for a plat, when there's a concrete requirement for a plat, okay, uh, let's, let's take out this thing that exempts you from a plat, and just make it an exemption from planning commission approval. Does that address your concern?
Yep.
You okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, let's move on. Can we get back to three now? Yes, are we done with one and two?
Yeah, three, again, um, just rolling down through three dash one, um, nothing in here jumps out at me, optional pre, pre-application conferences, doesn't mean we're gonna do them, it's just optional applications, construction plans, and G, if you turn the page, so just generally, let me explain to y'all what's happening here. We had a preliminary approval today, request, that was number nineteen. Those days would be gone with this amendment. What we're saying is, if you bring in a preliminary plat, you've got three years to record the plat. Not everyone wants to record the plat after preliminary approvals for some reason, I would think, once you file an application, pay fees, go through technical review, the goal is to get the plat to the courthouse, but not everyone wants it recorded. So preliminary approvals are good for three years, and then it gives you the same window to turn in construction plans, if you're showing us you're gonna build a street. And your construction plans then are executed, reviewed by the public works departments, and then we bond and move forward. But I think it's interesting, the preliminary approvals would change, no longer are we gonna grant nineteen preliminary approvals, twenty preliminary approvals, this process where we write them a letter saying, hey, the year's up, do you want to keep it another year, and they write us a letter, or in this case, they send us an email saying, sure, do it again. I mean, we're gonna grant preliminary approval, and say, it's good for three years, you record it when you choose to record it, after three years, it times out, and you need to file a new plat. That, that seems fair, um... That, that seems fair. Um, I'm not aware of too many folks that just continue to renew preliminaries nineteen, twenty, thirty years. That, that's very dated technology and process. So our process now is three-year preliminary approval. Developer, owner, you record the plat when you choose to record it. We'll bring it through this body, we'll approve it. It won't go to the courthouse till they choose for it to go to the courthouse, has all the signatures, and then it goes to the, but they got three years to basically get it recorded. Our plats will just have two piles, preliminary approved and then ones that went to the courthouse. So that's, that's kind.
The three, the clock starts when we approve, not when they.
Yes, sir.
Not when they take it to the courthouse and file it.
That's right. So the preliminary approval is gonna happen kind of jointly. It's going through technical review. They're gonna look at it. We redline it up, mark it up. Give it back to the developer, surveyor, engineer and say, here's the corrections. Doesn't really matter whether they're corrected before the planning, because the planning commission has approved in the plat. And kind of preliminary and as a final plat, and the final plat then is just the housekeeping, signatures, getting it ready to be recorded. The recording plat is truly the plat that goes to the courthouse. The housekeeping happens between preliminary and courthouse, but you guys will always be approving the plats as the statute requires, and they have three years then to record it if they choose to. And normally they will. I mean, normally people pay fees, go through the process. The goal is to get them to the courthouse, but you'd be surprised how many people for some reason say, I've changed my mind. I don't want to record it, or they just don't mess with it. Uh, where I worked before, I had a whole closet, hundreds of plats, you know, we did every year. Dozens of them, people just said, you look up three years later and they're just like, ah, we just decided not to do it, after they went through the whole process. But you can imagine the way we're doing it, which is every year you come back and then we write a letter, they write a letter, you all approve again. It, it's just too labor intensive and it just doesn't make sense. So this is just three years. Uh, could be five if y'all want it to be five, but three made sense. And in that same three-year window, if you're showing us public streets, you have to turn in your construction plans at least within three years. Once we bond the project, and this is different on construction. That starts on three dash three. Let's talk about construction. Once a developer turns in his construction plans, he can't start building streets until he does some things, which is turning a set of plans that'll be approved by Mr. Coffey or Mr. Campbell on the county side. A bond is posted that's satisfactory to us. A contract will now be required between the developer and the planning commission. And then we're gonna tell the developer, go ahead and build your street. So there's an item in here called a notice to proceed, which basically says now you can start your project because we have a bond, we have a contract, we have an approved set of plans. Our chair today has good experience in how construction happens out there, practical, real-world construction experience. And what we do today is this. If I own a hundred acre farm, I can go out and start building my streets today. I can start, I can get on the dozer, move dirt, start building my street, put the rock down, put the dense grade down, start on all my street because I haven't brought a plat in. I'm just playing on my farm to some degree, although the goal is to build a government street. The developer here today does not post the bond until he brings a plat in. So I might go out and do all this dirt work, grading work, rock, dense grade, put my base down, and then come in and say, now I'm ready to start selling some lots. Now I'm ready to bring you all a plat, and then we bond what? The final surface and the sidewalks. We didn't look at the dense grade. We didn't look at the rock. We didn't, we weren't, we didn't inspect the grading. We didn't bond any of those things. The developer comes in and just puts the icing on the cake, puts the sidewalks down, says he met the standards. Government takes the asset. That's our process today. The bond is the tail end. The developer chooses when he's gonna bond and what he's gonna bond. This process says you bring in a set of construction plans. If you're putting us on notice, you're gonna build the city of Danville a street, then you're gonna show us the plans and we're gonna bond all the public infrastructure at real-world prices, holistically, the whole project. And then we're gonna tell you to start the project. The danger in what we do today is a good developer, and we have a good developer on our planning commission here, they do it right. But a bad developer could go out and grade that any way they want. We don't know if they're using the right rock, not the right rock. Are they following the standards? Are they doing the dense grade right? We don't know these things because no one's out there checking on them. And the construction plans are on the file, but there's no inspection and oversight. Now, we're not probably best suited to do that, but this process has been redesigned to make sure the planning commission is in the process from the get-go if we're gonna build a public street. Ultimately, the goal is to protect the taxpayer and the government that they got a good asset.
And what happens if a developer jumps the gun and does what you say and starts pushing dirt around?
Well, again, you guys have all the control because you approve the plat. If they go out there and start building the street and they don't come into us first, these are the rules now of the county that says if you're gonna build a public street, you're supposed to turn in a preliminary plat. It starts with a preliminary plat, just show us the street network and then the set of construction plans. But if they go out there and start, I think we have the choice to not accept the street. Uh, they didn't follow the process. What we want them to do is come in and tell us you're gonna build a street, show us the plans like they do. Let us bond it, let us watch it, let us reduce the bond, let's get it done in three years and let the government accept the asset. That's the goal here.
There are also the penalties that would kick in if they did jump the gun.
Yeah. But the ultimate penalty is the government didn't have to take it. But there's the danger in my experience is what happens when street failures, when you see streets that don't last twenty or thirty or forty years. Problem isn't typically the surface. It's a problem when you leave the base open for eleven or twelve or fifteen years, I think as we experienced. But the bigger problem is no oversight in grading, the rock, the subgrade. The construction techniques are critical to getting a good asset at the tail end. Now, developers will scream and cry and say, well, that's not fair the way you're bonding and what I'm having to spend to build the city a street. But it's, it's in every situation, the city or the county's cost to maintain that street forever far outweighs what the developer put down in money to build that government street. And they're taking care of it forever and if not repaving it, rebuilding it ten times over, over the history, you know, so. The goal here is to get the developers to build good streets, bond them properly, us have proper oversight, and we release the bond incrementally. The other big ticket item that's in here that's new is a default date. We're saying on page three dash five, at some point, we're getting a developer three years. If you're gonna build a government street, you got three years to get it done. After that, you're in default, and what that means is we're not reducing anymore on the bond. We can move against the developer to finish it. We can call the bond, obviously. But there'll be a contract that lays all this out. The goal here is not to get in the situation we just got into, which is eleven years went by with base sitting open, not finished, not enough money in the, in our bank account. And ultimately, we had to go finish the project, and luckily we were able to come to some compromise, have enough money, get this done. But, you know, had we had to go out there and build everything like it initially was set up and the developer was gone, we would have been spending taxpayers' money to finish it. This tries to assure all those things don't happen again. Yes, sir.
Kind of brings one of the questions I had under section L, the sureties section.
Mm-hmm.
So, should we be codifying the fact, I thought, we talked about, I thought at the end of each one-year period that we would reestimate whether or not the bond dollars were sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
We don't talk about that anywhere here, at least that I saw. And my question is, should we codify that?
Well.
That at the end of every year, that we'll reestimate the bond to make sure it's adequate to cover the remaining activity.
And the commissioner is correct, and L, which then gets into subsection, there's the three kinds of bonds that we're accepted, which are performance bonds. And then cash sureties, which are rare. Then obviously what we see, probably ninety percent of the time are gonna be letters of credit. So what he's referring to is that those are one-year renewals and at the one-year renewal mark, should we reestimate the bond and make sure we're still on par with what we, we need.
Either that or make it higher because, I mean, you can have three or four percent inflation for three years and your ten percent isn't enough.
Well, here's where I'm gonna throw you a curve ball. With the developer doesn't even start in year one. He's got three years to finish it. He may post his bond, but he might not even start this year. He might not start to the thirteenth month for some reason. So the letter of credit, that first letter of credit is the full bond amount. The first reduction's kind of critical based on what the developer chose to do. Now, normally the developer's gonna come in and ask for a reduction. If they're smart, they're gonna come in. It's at the reduction, and we do say that then on M on three dash five. Anytime there's a reduction request in there, we can reestimate the bond. But I guess what's interesting and it, it does kind of relate is what Commissioner Mannan's saying is every year the letter of credit renews, we should be reestimating the bond, but we are gonna reestimate the bond at every request for the developer for a reduction. Which typically does happen not at, not during the one year, but just during the year. It always happens after you call the bond, cause I want to get the cash back, and it's real tricky under a performance bond to do, change those amounts sometime. So I don't know if we want to do it every year at the letter of credit renewal, but we definitely have language in here that say we're gonna do that when the developer makes a request to reduce. And the difference is we're making the developer bond one hundred percent now. So he's gonna be incentivized to either turn in a smaller phase and ask for those reductions, maybe two, three, four times a year. Cause as he gets his grading done, he's like, I sure would like to get fifty grand back. You know, you're holding a bigger chunk of money. He's incentivized here to get it done and get it reduced. So we can do it both times, but at the letter of credit renewal, it's always good to look at it, but you gotta have something to base it on, and that's what work has been performed, plus the ten percent inflationary number that's already on here. So we sort of have it in M, and it's tied in with the developer making requests as opposed to the renewal, but we can tag it in there if you think we need to.
I'm just trying to avoid what did happen, you know, on that farm.
Also, Steve, in section one, uh, in section two and three, you got three years he has to complete it to develop for. I don't see the same thing in section one.
In section one?
Yeah.
Well, a corporate performance bond is interesting. In theory, they, they don't renew. We, I don't know how many if we do, and Jeffrey, you can jump in here, but I've only dealt with a few developers that are big enough to be able to put up an insurance, and what they're doing is they're putting in up an insurance policy, they're saying, are, are in, you know, we're covered. They typically aren't renewed every year. They're usually done for the life, and I think the regulations then catch that they have three years before the default. It's the language in, N on three dash five that says you have three years to get done. The problem with cash sureties and letters of, letters of credit renew every year, cash sureties, we're just holding the money. If they were to post the cash, we're saying they have three, but really default in number N is where we catch everything. Every project has a three-year time cycle to get finished. Performance bonds are tricky. We can add the three-year, but how they bond them is, is unique, because every insurance policy is unique to how they bond them and how the company interacts with their company. I've had some that say, you know, they have a ten-year policy for whatever projects they do. And some, some of those bigger companies are coming in just doing the grade work, for example, under a developer and using their performance bond to bond the grading portion only. So it gets really messy when we're dealing with insurance policies.
I like section A. I'll take care of it.
Yeah, we can tag the three years in there too. It's the same cookie cutter sentence, but I think where we're really catching all of these is in number N for sure.
Well, the letter of cred, when they commit a letter of cred, I assume we double check their numbers to make sure that they're, what dollar they're proposing.
So.
City engineers.
So here, here's an interesting thing. Actually, the developer normally turns in the initial bond estimate, and then the city engineer or the county verifies. They'll look at the plans and say, nah, you said one hundred and ten thousand. We think that's gonna be more like a hundred and thirty thousand. And that's where that first number comes into play. But what's not happening is we're not really going through and doing another estimate through the life cycle of a project.
Every time they ask for renewal, it's like a new letter of credit, because something could have changed the, you know, the cost of stuff and whatever, so I would think that.
We'll do it however you guys want. I, I think more safety nets, the better. Letter of credit.
Letter of credit.
Because it, yeah, it is virtually.
I'm doing, I think we should be checking the numbers to make sure we're, we're doing. It's like a, we do a renewal.
What, what, so that, what we'll do is under letter of credit.
But they, the, I mean, the city or county engineer probably have to be involved.
That's to reverify, that's to reverify the dollar.
And that's all spelled out in M, so we need to somehow tie in that letter of credit renewal that will review the letter of credit under the procedures laid out in, in M. And again, it's not a reduction sometimes at that point, but normally it is. It normally is a reduction. Henry, we're looking at you.
We're not the engineer here, but I would ask that you look at how.
Well, you guys are, the letter of credit language, I think we'll just, we need to put a line in there that the bonds will be reviewed. And the actual language is in the, um. The language is in the reduction chapter right there.
Cause my question is, is, you know, who's gonna do all this? I mean, we've got a city that's, they're.
Well.
It's hard, we can't even get a signature. How am I gonna get somebody to go out and inspect something in, in a timely manner? Cause I mean, my experience is even getting these done the first time, the timely manner is.
I agree.
Difficult.
And we gotta be fair to the developers too, you guys. Um, so it really does fall on us. Now, I have some experience in this, so I feel comfortable, but I won't be here forever, obviously. But construction is part of subdivision regulations and it really needs to be a role the planning commission evolves into. We got a staff member I'd like to see evolve into more of a field inspector, plan reviewer, not just doing code enforcement. But this would be our role, to go out there and look at approved roll of the base and make sure we're looking at quantities of rock. I don't think we're ever gonna get public works departments to go out and be our field inspectors for this, because really their role is to accept, review the plans, assist with the bond setting, and then rely on the planning commission to deliver an asset that meets their punch list requirements. So we would have to evolve into that inspection, field inspection role. Which right now, we just wouldn't be very good at, to be honest, but we'll, we'll get, we'll just figure it out. And the reason to figure it out is because ultimately, we're the main piece to assure the asset is done right.
What's the line of communication in between the developer or the person putting in the road?
Us. It'd be us and public works. And again, that's why I think we can improve. I think we have a good, we have a great relationship right now with both governments. We're in the same building as city public works. Uh, the drainage issue you heard today was talked about as easy as walking across the hall and looking at plans. So I think that's how it really works, is if there was a problem, we just need to get public works involved on the city projects. And they're vested in that too. Ultimately, they're gonna be taking this asset. Um, I sent this document to both governments. Earl's indicated this process is a better way to look at this, but you're right. We actually need someone to go out there and make sure we're building the street the right way. But on the flip side, what are we doing now? We're letting developer build it. At the end, city's going out doing some kind of inspection.
But it's engineered.
It's engineered.
And there's a, there's a responsibility and liability for the person.
That's right. There's gonna be a contract, and there's usually a set of as-built drawings on the backend that certify we did things right. So really, the planning commission's job's not that hard on the backend. It is hard in the middle part, because you do have to go out there and make sure that developers don't cheat around the corners, and I've brought this up several times. Good developers are fine, but I'm, I'm telling you, a key part of, of road life is rock and dense grade and grading. And I have seen developers, in my experience, push a, a tree stump and try to fill on it. I've seen dense grade tailgated off the truck and not rolled in. If your inspector's not out there doing his job, don't be surprised when you end up with a bad asset or a road failure, even before the acceptance. I did a project once, we hadn't even got to the acceptance, and the road already failed. Well, it turns out, planning commission assumes some of that responsibility because we missed something in the field inspection. And the developer took advantage of that. That's the relationship there. We set the rules. We gotta be out there making sure they're building the street right and have the expertise and technique to do that. And then we gotta work with the developer to make sure to remedy any problems as we're building the asset. A good developer, believe it or not, it'll go easy, but I don't know all the folks in this community or who may come to this community, but don't be surprised when somebody tries to cut a corner on the regulations if no one's watching them. That's just the nature of construction sometimes with bad developers. But luckily here, we've had good developers, from what we can tell. But I've seen bad developers come in your community and literally try to tailgate dense grade over the weekend in the rain and cover it up before you get out there on Monday.
I got a question.
So, go ahead.
Since we're having, you know, you're having a timeline that the developer has to, you know, the three years it starts. I do feel like with each step, if, if we're moving in this direction, then, you know, they're on the planning commission side or whoever is in charge of this. You know, they can't wait a month, you know, to go and check this out because that's not fair to, to the developer. I mean, so there needs to be like, you know, when you call. I mean, so there needs to be like, you know, when you call, how much, you have seven days or whatever, because we're going to run into much more than three years, I'm afraid, and then the developer's going to be the one who is penalized.
Yeah, well, the way you, way we eat the three years is two different ways. You don't turn in plats with 150 lots and all these roads and think you're going to complete them in three years. If your completion mindset is contingent to you selling lots, the conceptual plan we just put up there today, if that developer builds all those streets up front, or says, I'm going to try to do those in three years, and I have just enough money to build 100-foot of road at a time as I sell lots, no, he's not going to get done. Our three-year clock is to make it timely for two reasons. Number one, the economy changes. If we, if we let a developer have eight years or 10 years to build his street, and then one goes into default, if we weren't doing the reductions, if we weren't reestimating, we're going to look up and the price asphalt spikes on us. We inherited a project, we're holding 80 grand in the bank, and we've got to go out and put $200,000 worth of asphalt down. The goal is incentivize the developer to get done quicker, but the way he really manages it is to turn in smaller sections.
Yeah.
That's a smart developer will do.
My question is, is how is it going to be? Like, who's going to be the person that you say, they have seven days to go and check this out? Or, you know, and approve it, for you to move to the next step?
Well.
Because if not, it could get hairy, that you are waiting another month or.
Well, we're going to, we're going to have to work on our construction technique. We're going to need a punch list, a list here internal, and we're going to need to have a procedural thing. But no, if a developer calls and says, look, I'm ready, we're not going to hold the developer up. At this point in time, it's not fair to developer to say, look, we're going to inspect everything, and you can't go on to the next phase without us to, we're going to have to be smart enough to understand, we're going to have to move in and out of these projects. Developer stays on his own timeline, in my opinion. He's going to go out there and say, look, I'm going to do my dirt work this weekend, and I'm planning on putting rock down on Sunday. Planning commission better either then show up on Sunday or be prepared on Monday to try to figure it out after the fact. But we're not going to hold him up incrementally. There'll be a construction conference that's part of this, and we'll talk about timing of the development, but it's not my intention to piecemeal that construction to such a phase where he can't go on from this to this without a written signature. It's going to be way looser than that, it has to be, or it won't work. It just has to be the developers doing it under his own timeline, and we've got to get in and out under his construction timeline.
You don't have to, you're just going to follow the project on your own.
I'm going to document all phases internally, kind of like the way the state does if you go out and see a job site. There's this guy sitting in the truck, they're out there, but they can afford to sit out there through the whole project. And there are stop points in all construction, but ours isn't going to be like that.
You're not going to have multiple, multiple, multiple projects going on.
That's number one, and number two, we don't have staff to do it any other way. We're going to have to let the developer do kind of like he does now, and we're just going to have to be smart enough to make sure to achieve the objective of a good assets. We're just going to have to be out there several times, and we need a staff person that's trained and able to do that. And, and our chairman's right, we, we haven't hardly have any projects going on, so it'd be real easy if we had three. At one point, I had 90 going on at one time, and seven full-time staff, that's all they did, and they couldn't keep up with the 90. I mean, to jump around on the weekend when seven different paving companies are paving, I mean, it was impossible, but we just, and I'll just be honest with you, we knew who the, the good developers were, and we knew the guys, we better go out there five times in one day. You learn those things in construction oversight, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, in, in terms of having an expert on our commission, I think they could, if, if the first kind of plan came from them, you know, us as not being experts, except for you possibly and, and Jeff, we could at least understand it more and understand the process more, so, because they, they, they have time constraints.
Well, so all this is going through the city engineer with county.
Yeah, sure.
He's just, he's just saying, just doing follow-up, making sure what's already been agreed to is going to be done, is being done.
In a perfect world, in a small town like this, we'd have a relationship with the public works where we could go and say, hey, this is a pretty big project, is there any way one of your guys could go out there with us and do some random inspections? I, I could see that happening very easily, and by the way, I think they do that way we do development now.
I don't have a problem, but I think, you know, if you're having to call in like a code enforcement and get, okay, you know, first, we're ready for our rough-in inspection.
Yeah, there's no way.
We're ready, you, that.
There's no way.
Because it all happens too fast.
Too fast, that's exactly right.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, the big thing, your 45 days is too short.
For what?
For road takeover.
It's in the law.
I know several, I've worked in several counties that take over for a year.
Well, I understand that.
You've got to go, you've got to, you've got to let your, increase your asphalt cure.
State law, state law says just that, you guys, and it's an interesting thing, and I didn't, Mary Bell sent me a doc, or Mary Bell, Mary Beth, sorry, you're Mary Bell now, there you go. Sent me a document, and I read it, and it's interesting, and I read something that, um, that's on American Plan Association. But state law says this, any street's been built in accordance with a specific standard set forth subdivision regulations or by ordinance shall be by operation of law automatically accepted for maintenance by the government 45 days after inspection and final approval. It doesn't even need an ordinance at the county under the law, and then we do other things. That's the law, but here's what's interesting, what is actually final approval? That's where planning commissions take a lot of liberties under this statute. Final approval might mean, well, the planning commission's final approval is a punch list, you know, two winters and a, you know, and then the city goes in and does a punch list. But I can tell you, as a planning commission, I've been personally sued for a local government that decided that that 45 days was on their timeframe, and they went out, had another punch list, independent of the sub regs, that dealt with ADA aprons on driveway cuts and drainage issues and backflowing, or backfilling the sidewalks that weren't in the regulations, that they went out and said, well, we want this, 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 and this, or we won't take it. And guess what, the developer sued and says, the law says, when I met the subdivision regs, y'all had no choice but to take it.
Most state laws are federal. Local, local municipalities can make stricter laws, they can't make less strict than the state law. And what that, what that one year does, it lets the concrete cure, it lets the pavement cure. You put asphalt down in May, it still soft, but August, you're saying you've got to take it over.
Our government right now has got another standard, in addition to that, I mean, it's going, it could be three to five years, so they're going to take it, the ordinance they have.
Is that why you have the warranty provision, maybe?
We have a warranty provision in there, and again, the final acceptance typically never happens in 45 days. The developer says, I'm ready for it to be taken. Sometimes, he might do it 45 days after he puts the surface down, but sometimes he might not do it for a year.
That may be why county have a 51% occupancy.
Occupancy of structures, yeah, which means if, you know, that, you never have to, but you got to, again, we got to protect the developer on this, too. The developer's putting money down under a contract and a process, saying, I've met the standards. And if your standards are correct, you don't have that problem, truthfully.
What happens if the county accepts it after 45 days and nine months into your warranty, you have a problem?
Well, then, right now, we have no warranty period, so right now, if the county accepted it today and you had a problem one month later, it's theirs to fix.
Right, but un, under section P, you're saying a one-year warranty.
It's a one-year warranty.
Saying what happens if it's after the 45 days but less than the one year, so it's still under warranty, but the county's taking it.
Well, the warranty provision doesn't start till acceptance. So, the warranty provision, the 12 months starts when the county formally says it's, we're taking it. So, the 45 days would then behind that. Because the 45 days is just a threshold on when it becomes accepted, if the county or city doesn't act. The city and the county, in our county, formally accepts these assets by ordinance, and that's at whatever timeframe, but then the warranty period would start at acceptance for one year.
So, when you accept it, you aren't necessarily saying you're going to do maintenance if it's under warranty?
Well, what it says here, though, if you read through it a little more detail, it says that the work performed and the products installed in these regulations have been performed in accordance with said plans, plat, and specifications in a good workman-like manner and free from defects. So, what happens is, in the real world, is we have a failure 11 months in. Developer's going to say, I did everything correct, that failure was not my fault. That's another one of these weird, sinkholes opened up, that one's on you, government. Then there's others where the government comes in and says, no, we had a failure, and guess what we think it is? And they go out and core drill it and say, y'all shorted us on the rock, and planning commission missed it, that's on you. You know, why do we have failures? Rocks, not enough rock, not enough dense grade, grading wasn't done right, drainage isn't right, there's very, there's difference. So, the, it gets down to, was the work done in accordance to the plans and the specs? Or was it not? If it was, the developer can say, look, that's, that's not on me. That failure failed for somewhere the reason, I'm not fixing it. Question is, if your standards are good, you shouldn't have a failure in one month, two months, two years, five years, 10 years. If your standards are good, you're building a 40-year asset for the government that should be there.
Do we have a history of any failures here?
I haven't been here long enough to know or have heard that, but I don't think so.
Conversations with Earl.
No, I was in a community, we had a history of failures, a lot of them, in five years and six years, and what we traced it back down, back to was grading. You know, just grading techniques, construction techniques, ditches, utility ditches that weren't backfilled right, lot of collapse, you know, ditches and manhole covers sinking, curb inlet boxes sinking, those are all construction techniques that weren't executed right, and we were having failures three to five to seven years in, which meant either the standards were bad, or the construction oversight was bad, and we had the combination of both. And that was why the regs were revised in my prior community in 2004, '07, '09, '11, '13, '15, and just last year. They're continually upgrading their document as they realize these are what cause road failures. But a common assumption is, you build houses, you've, you know, if you build houses and have construction traffic on roads, they'll fail. But Lexington requires developers to build all the roads up front, final surface, and we build houses and the roads don't fail, and they're willing to take them. It's about techniques on the developer's side, on the home builder's side, and they can work. But it gets back to Mr. Carroll's point, if your standards are good, you don't have to worry about some of these things, but if your standards aren't good, which are, we're not changing, and I think we trust them, this is talking about thickness of base, thickness of final surface, then hopefully this asset will last. We just put the paving down on Hunt Farm, it looks good. Will it last 20, 40 years? I don't know, considering there's still several homes to build, there's the answer right there, you know?
So. Should we kind of summarize what we've agreed to on any changes to Article Three?
Yeah.
And then maybe continue on with the other articles at the next meeting?
We can do that, sure, it's your all's call. Let, let me just real quick mention what's in four, though, and, and mention that four is kind of a big deal, and, and maybe this needs to all just be looked at next month. Article four is what goes on a plat, and the reason why four is important, because it really ties into Article Two, and if you guys were to pass one and two, and even three on how we approve plats, there's some language that jumps into four. So, they're sort of, one through four kind of go together, and then, and then five and six, again, are staying seven, and sevens just are definitions, which are basically the same. So, four is what goes on plats, and there's some big stuff in plats about signatures, and you guys have talked about this before, what's going to go on the plat, who's going to sign the plat? So, there's some pretty big ticket items in there. But they're making everything more uniform and simplifying several things. So, but it's whatever you guys want to do, if we want to table this for today, come back next month, approve one through three. I'd like to get three passed at some point, just because it, it is trying to address some problems that we literally have dealt with, and if a project came in tomorrow, we're following the old process.
So, you're saying we really need to, could we pass one through three today?
I think you can.
Or do we need to?
I think you can, it just makes it, I, I, I think you can, it makes it a little messy without doing four, but I, and again, because at the same time, I guess I'm saying, we're repealing other things. So, what do, you know, again, goes back to that chart up here, and it's just, it's just because of the nature of our document. You can see what we're doing, we're, we're, Articles One, Two, and Three is actually new, but we're repealing one, seven, two, three, three, four, five, and so if we don't do four, we almost have to keep some of those old articles still around.
We wouldn't have a four if we don't.
Because our four is spread out in three, four, 4.5, five, A, and C.
I guess, I guess we have two options, we can go through four now, or we can table it all. I just, I'd hate to retread over all this again next month, when we've already.
Well, if we need to take a break or something, we can do that, if you guys, I know we're dragging on. I could try to go through four pretty quick, there's nothing here, to me, this one's actually not that much. It's actually a big reorganization, really.
Excuse me, could we go back to three a minute, please?
Sure.
Everything he said about the road, miss that, I don't have a problem with. However, in section 3.1 subdivisions, you're not distinct, most of everything you've talked about this morning is major subdivisions, require street, sidewalk, nothing. What about a, a city lot that can be divided into two pieces?
Yep.
You're not distinguishing between a small lot and a subdivision.
So.
The major subdivision is a larger undertaking. And, and in Article Two, it says you've either got a subdivision and not conform to law record or a final plat. But there are smaller lots that cannot do what mainly Article Three is doing.
So, so let me explain this, and answer that question. So, again, the words major, minor, got to throw them out.
I understand that.
Okay, and, and so, but three, everything you want to know about a minor is, is, is on one page in Article Three.
And what page is that?
Three dash one. You turn, you turn in an application, we do preliminary plat review, and the planning commission approves it, and you re-record it.
So, you're, you're going to?
It's a plat, two lots, one lot, retraced, three lots, it's all been simplified, so plats, subdivisions under the law.
So, a small, all right, how many lots can you have under a preliminary plat?
As many as you want, with a street, without a street. Every circumstance is different, I guess, I might cut off four lots on a county road, I might figure out a way to plat my farm into 10 fives with the frontage, I might figure out a way that I want to build a street. If I'm building a street, then we get into Item G, construction plans, and we start to flow down the hill. But if you're just turning in a minor plat, you're going to file an application, you're going to go through technical review, that's in D, and the planning commission's going to review your plat, and then recording plat is F1. Literally, pages three, one, and just through F on three, two, is, catches every minor plat, as we used to call them minors. Now, the standards are really in four, but the standards on what's on the plat is the housekeeping stuff. What do we sign, who signs? Well, minors and majors are going to be the same. The plats are going to be uniform as what's on the plat. The difference on a plat with a street is going to have construction plans, and then all the rest of this, Chapter Three, is about construction. But if you're doing a minor plat, it's as simple as turning in an application and B.
And what would we call that?
A plat, subdivision plat.
So, in our title block across the top, where we used to have minors, finals, and whatever, we're just going to put plat?
Subdivision plat.
Subdivision plat.
Steve Hunter, two lots.
And you're going to require a topographical survey on everything?
It says, it actually then says, and that's in four, so you're jumping back to four.
No, 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 it's second sentence under 3.1. A topographic survey shall be required on all subdivisions.
Except for farm plats and subdivision regions, we not require additional lots.
One lot, I've got to have a topographical survey.
When we get into four, well, we can make that an option if you don't think you need to do it, but.
It, it just costs more money on the landowner. I know you don't care, but I do because.
No, that's not that, it's not that. I see situations where having topo and a survey is helpful. If you guys want to make that optional on minor plats, if it's just two lots, but I've seen people cut five lots, we're having topo on it, and I've seen surveyors turn it in, even on a minor, because they thought it was important. I guess we can make.
If I think it's important, that's one thing, but if it's a, if it's a lot that is as flat as a flitter, and you're required a topographical survey, and also, do you want that done as USGS, you want it flown?
Gets back to Article Four lays all this out, and it says, topographical survey shall be submitted either by.
We're not talking about Article Four, we're talking about Three.
Nancy, Three is the process, four is the contents of a plat.
Explains it.
Explains it, so in four, we hadn't got there yet, we clearly say what a sketch plat is, and when we do a topographic survey, it says, it says, shall be submitted either by a Kentucky licensed professional land surveyor, licensed professional engineer, registered landscape architect. it says, shall be submitted either by a Kentucky licensed professional land surveyor, licensed professional engineer, registered landscape architect, or to some limited degree an architect, which is in their state law. The division of work to be performed by each professional shall be governed by the state statutes and regulations which in- indicate each profession. That's all we say about doing them. If you guys don't want to do them on minors, that's fine, for every circumstance, you say they're flat as a board, I can tell you there's a sinkhole, or there's a depression, or there's an issue that, again, to protect property owners, I don't know if turning in a retraced survey and not doing that is doing justice in every plat scenario. They really do vary when you need them. I could, again, for, for me, being new to the community, if we don't think we want them in this county, I'm neutral on that. But then again, we're right back to, we're creating a set of standards for minors that don't exist for majors. What we sign, what we don't sign, who reviews, we're going to get into Four and talk about the issue that the Health Department's going to look at all plats, and KDOT, if they're on state road, these are things that assure uniformity in the plat process, and, and ultimately protect, not maybe the, your client, but the ten clients after them that end up buying that piece of property. If you all don't think we need to do those kinds of, that kind of survey on every plat, that's why we're having this discussion.
What kind of expense is involved in the topographic survey?
I have no idea.
Well, back to my question, do you want to buy field observation, do you want it by USGS, off a USGS map? Do you want it flown, or, uh, or flown?
I think it says by either, I mean, I, I think it's just a matter.
But it is very expensive. USGS map is taking a map and, and tracing it off.
I mean, a hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars, I have no clue.
It depends on how big it is and how, and what kind of contours do you want on it, do you want about one foot, five foot, ten foot? I mean, it's a major expense.
But what you're talking about, we, we've referred to as minor plats, what?
But then he says there are no minor plats.
But what we have referred to as a minor plat, what would a normal expense be?
Unless there is an issue with the topography, I don't see that it's necessary, because it, it, it takes, it takes time, and time, and time is money.
But that's what I'm trying to figure out, is it something that would cost a typical minor plat owner a hundred dollars, or would it cost them ten thousand dollars?
It could be, it could be somewhere in between.
So, so.
It could be five hundred dollars.
So let me jump in here, guys, so let me give you an example, and, and, and so where we're at. So let's say I own eight acre park on Perryville Road, we know our county's not flat everywhere. There's frontage, there's dips and dives, there's access issues. We do minor plats right now, we cut off that eight into two fours, and y'all look at it, we do nothing, we have no access notes, and with no topo, I think we all know it goes up and down, but to really say two driveways will work on some of these properties that run down that road, I don't know that. Someone ends up buying one of those fours, it's been cut off. I feel it's our job to put an access note on there, they can get a driveway, number one, and I think without that kind of information, that driveway not, may not be achievable because of the rise and fall along the edge of that right away, and I can think.
The state determines that.
Well, we're going to start to work with the state to help determine that on all plats, again, to make all plats under the same process is the goal here, that ultimately, I don't end up with a four acre track that turns out I can't use. Simply because a survey was done and says it's four acres doesn't mean I can build a house on it, for various reasons, whether it be septic or access.
I'm saying some of that is the responsibility of the purchaser.
It is, it is, but our, in the plat review process, what I'd like to do is at least set a minimum set of standards. Again, we're talking about Three, but Four is where we're talking about what goes on a plat. Now, if you guys want to strike in Four, Four Point Three, and take that, I, I'm fine with it. We're not trying to put surveyors out of business, nor are we trying to cost landowners another five hundred dollar bill to do a topo survey. Now, we require it on all site plan submittals. Um, Kendall just had that just a second ago, a lot of surveys put it on there, some surveyors don't if they don't have to, that's how it goes. Mr. Carroll's in the audience, you can jump in there too?
A lot of it depends on infrastructure that you've got, building roads, that almost requires topo, any type of proposed immediate development. If you're going to put a building up, you know you better do drainage, you're, you're going to reshape the earth right there, so it's a topo, it's very, very complicated.
Helps us at the zoning permit level, because then we can use the plat and save the homeowner from doing too much at the zoning, because we can just use the plat with a sketch on it as their zoning permit. Everyone does these different, if it, again, I, I think we can do it either way. It's true though, it may cost more on a survey, and it may ultimately cost the property owner more. Now, the range of that's interesting, we get asked every single day, hey, I need to apply it, or I need to do a zoning permit, or site, do I have to call a surveyor? Do I need to use a surveyor? Well, yes, no, maybe. What do they charge? We never know. We just always say, well, there's a range, you know, it could be five hundred bucks, could be five thousand, we don't know. You need to call, check around, price check, they all do it differently, so, you know, it, honestly, it is going to, every situation will be different, and every surveyor may do this different ways and have different techniques to achieve that more efficiently or less efficiently, so, whether they're going to require it on all plats or not, um, it's, it's your all's call.
What is the temperature of the commission at this point?
Well, can I jump into Four just a tad, because there's another item that really relates to that, if you guys are okay with, I know, or take a break, or we, we'll just table it.
Let's go, let's get to twelve o'clock, and we'll decide what we want to do.
Alright, so let me just generally, on that same tone, let's jump into Four real quick. So again, going to it, uh, was just described here, all plats, and it's right there on Page, or on, this is numbered goofy in Four, it's Page Two, because we're going to consolidate all these numbers, but preliminary plat requirements is pretty much this, what we put on a plat, all the way down through. So all plats are going to have the same stuff on them, and it's literally listed on Section Four dash Four is everything we want on a plat. The recording plat, there's a few extra items, and that's when we start to talk about these signature blocks. And right now, as you all know, and that gets into, let's go to Page Six in Section Four. As you all know right now, we treat minor plats different than majors. The true term that Nancy's alluding to is we're going to have plats with public infrastructure and plats without public infrastructure. So if you're building roads and turning preliminary plat, we move to the construction phase, we follow the book, it's four and a half pages after that. If you're just doing a minor plat, preliminary plat, cutting off two lots, three lots, four lots, we're doing one thing right now that saves property owners two hundred dollars right now on every minor plat. We no longer require preliminary site evaluations on preliminary plats, on minor plats, or plats over three cuts. We do that now, but we are going to streamline signatures and make the same signatures be on all the plats. Because one disservice I see right now is, on a minor plat, some of those notes, uh, are good, but we aren't certifying access. We're doing it on bit, what we call majors, or finals, or whatever you want to call them, but on a minor plat, what we want to see is if there's drainage, we want it signed on. If there's access, we want the city, the county, or the state to sign the plat and say this thing can get a driveway. That's as important on a minor plat as it is on a big plat. We want utility signatures on all plats. But we've changed what utility signatures are, they're no longer gas, cable, or media, they're just electric, water, and sewer. That's all we want signed on the plat. We want you to know anything on a plat that's on the ground. If a surveyor's out there doing a survey, and there's a gas line, you have to show the gas line on the survey, but we don't need their signature. We're not.
Easements, we want to show.
That's, we want to show the easements, and, but we're not, it's, we're not going to make developers and surveyors run around the country to go get signatures. What we want to do is keep it simple, but we want electric, water, and sewer. And the reason why that's important again is, if I buy a lot, I had, should have some assurance I can get electric to it. And again, it is my responsibility, if I'm going to build a house, but it is our responsibility in the plating process to assure that this is a buildable piece of property, or can be developed, can get a driveway, and those are just basic things.
We're not making electric a caveat of acceptance, we're just saying it's going to be noted.
Noted, and if it's on there, it'll be shown as an easement.
Right, but you can.
That's right.
But electric requires a signature.
Right, but with, if it doesn't have electric, that's all that's going to be noted.
That's right, and what, in my experience, what I've seen happen is, especially with the gas company, is they wouldn't sign a plat till they got the easement that they didn't have today. That's what we don't want to go in this community. Cable's been notoriously bad about that too. Plat, when you had all the signatures on all the plats, cable wouldn't sign the plat, not because we couldn't find them, because guess what? We want an easement and we don't have it, they were holding the plat hostage to get what they wanted. Our role here is to look at the public utilities, which is water, sewer, and, and electric, and we've all talked at the technical, or the advisory committee, whether KU's public or private, but electric's important, so our utility certification is three players. KU, City of Danville, and that's pretty much it. As far as septic goes, we do have a signature box for the Health Department, which says, they're just going to look at the plats and determine whether it goes on sewer, or it goes on septic. But this kind of get a preliminary site evaluation, what we're doing now is we're making people do more than three cuts, you did it, and if you did two, you didn't have to do it. I, I don't see the purpose of doing preliminary site evaluations at the plat level at all. Because things change, and till you have your home plans, your construction plans, you can't really determine what you need as far as a septic system anyhow. You could sit three years and a sewer creep to you, and then all of a sudden we need to connect the sewer. So our signature box for the Health Department is just simply, them, they will get an opportunity to look at every plat. They're right here in town, and they're just going to check whether or not this one is in the realm of sewer, or this one would fall under septic, and that's all we're looking for them to do. If they want, don't want to sign it, we'll just put N A, and we'll record the plat. Uh, state's the same thing, I talked to KDOT yesterday, they would like to see all these plats. The state law even says, if the Highway Department requests to see plats, we actually have to let them review plats. But what we would like to do is a hybrid situation, that if we're on a state road, we get KDOT to sign the plat, and their access person, we're trying to figure out if they could come here to Danville and sign them all kind of at one time, so no one has to drive to Lexington. And of course, utilities are going to be here in town, but these would be the basic signature blocks that would go on all plats. And again, that is a change from minor plats. So I figured I'd just throw that out there, the rest of Four is what goes in a drainage plan, and what goes actually in construction plans. So the big chunk of Chapter Four that you see has nothing to do with plats. The content of the plat starts on Four and runs through Page, because the signature blocks took up a lot of pages, runs through Eight. The rest of that chapter is what goes in a drainage plan, and what goes in a set of construction plans, which would not be applicable again to minor plats. So I won't go into anything more in Four. Go ahead, sorry.
We said we got recording of the plat.
Well, the recording of the plat, what we're saying is, again, it's, in, in real terminology, the plats come in as a preliminary plat, which is on Page Two, and the recording plat is really what we're going to take to the courthouse. And the difference of the preliminary plat and recording plat are the signatures. Because technical review doesn't need to have all the signatures to review the plat, they're looking at it from a preliminary plat, and that's what they're approving. Planning Commission, you guys are approving the preliminary plat slash final plat, which means once all the signatures are on it, it's ready to go to the courthouse. So the recording plat is just literally the final plat with all the signatures on it, ready to be recorded. It's the same plat.
So for, for the topographic survey, suppose we accept a copy of the USGS map for that area, unless it's unclear to the commission what the top, topography is from that, and then we can request more detail from the surveyor.
Lot of towns do just that, just exactly that.
That makes it simple, just copy a map, stick it on the plat, and then you're done, if it's simple.
I'm fine with that.
Then you can do what you need to do to make it clear to the commission what you're doing.
Does that work? Nancy?
Yep.
And the, go ahead.
Jump up here, sorry.
Article Four, Four Point One A. This does not conform to the state surveying board's requirements. Uh, Four Point Three.
So, so hold on, Four Point One.
Four Point Two.
Two A?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what we need to put in there then.
I'll have to, I'll hit you the information that comes from the state board for you to look at, because.
What in there you think doesn't, which item?
Well, all of it. State board does not require North Arrow in the title block. It requires more information than what's on here, but what you've got listed.
Well, I think.
Well, it says any other appropriate information.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Again, I think what we wanted to see is the name, the date.
The minimum standard, what we asking for.
The North Arrow and the names and address, that's what we want to see in the title block. The other stuff you want to put in there, you're welcome to do that, but we want at least to see that.
Alright, Four Point Three D. You're saying it has to be on a scale of no greater or less of one hundred feet per square inch. There are times when you've got a bigger piece of ground with all the other information that you want on a plat, that that's not going to work. A one each equal, uh, a hundred and twenty, sometimes a hundred and fifty, because of the size of the lot with all the other information that you want on there.
Well, then it comes a two-page plat typically, because my problem is, we're trying to see stuff that is hard to see, man.
If it's, if it's not legible, that's one thing, but if it's leg, okay.
Well, I have, I mean, that's, that's typically what I would see, and again, we're down to differences between surveyors a lot of times. Some surveyors will turn in two-page plat, some will try to put everything on one plat, all of them do it different. I think we're trying to standardize that, but she's right, if you guys want to see it at one twenty-five, I don't know if it's a deal breaker for us.
Did you need to specify as long as the plat is legible?
Who's to determine that?
Yeah.
Whoever's preparing the plat.
Well, that's why we put a standard, because I think that's led, that, that, that works for us. Now, again, I, typically, that's what I'm seeing turned in, is that an issue?
Would the hood or double, it's off light, I mean, you need to do one to two hundred, it's still like a legging, which is.
I have to use my magnifying glass when I home, when I get this package.
Oh, well, that's because what you've got is reduced.
Well, but that's.
You don't, you don't have the big sheet of paper, what you have is reduced.
No, we, we usually get the same thing here, Steve delivers it to the house, and I look at it, and I, I've got to take out my lighted magnifying glass and hope I can see it.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, I, I'm not, I'm not making a value judgment on what you're saying.
It depends on the detail.
I, I mean, honestly, we'll work with that, um.
Most of the time, it won't matter.
Spend a couple of dollars, friend of mine.
What do you typically use? What's a typical?
Like you said, sometimes it goes to.
I said typical, I'm just asking typical, not sometimes.
Typical's depending on what, completely dependent on the size of property. I mean, if you're doing a hundred acre farm, I can put it on the two hundred scale, it's going to be easy.
How many hundred acre farms?
We just did ten blocks today with a one acre, two acres, and fives, because what do we typically see on one you cut up with five acre plats or four and one? What would be?
Oh.
When's the last time we had a hundred acre farm?
Yeah.
Well, you want to talk sometimes, Nancy, sometimes, when, when's the last time we saw a hundred acre farm plat come in here?
I understand that, but if you're setting a standard, then what all it should be is it should be legible, I mean.
And my question to that is determined by whom?
The all the beholder?
We're just trying to standardize things, so it's easier for us to look at these things.
Because one to two hundred work, we did it, I mean, you got a class that's still turning hundreds if you thought of it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I make them as big as possible, so you can't see, it's not as, it's not as.
Why don't we just change it to two hundred? Alright, my, I, we had a.
Hold on a minute.
He only gave you till noon, though, I, I, I ain't gonna sue.
Am I not allowed to say something?
Don't interfere, Jeremy.
In our advisory committee, we had mentioned also at the end of those, of the general provisions that we were going to add, a specific location for the purpose statement. Did that make it onto the new one?
Yes, I believe, well, let's see, I think I stuck that in there, let's see.
I'm going with my old one. Page fifteen.
I've stuck it in there somewhere.
Yeah, it is, here it is, it's on Page Four E, purpose statement.
Four E, there's.
It's on Page Four, letter E.
E, purpose statement looking directly below vicinity map, and subscribe. Purpose statement looking directly below the vicinity map and subscribe type of plat, general intent of the plat, five thirty. One of the things, though, why these folks are here is the advisory committee mentions, we really do want to uniform where things go on the plat. We get different surveyors, put this map here, an arrow here, the purpose statement there. We're going to, one of the dependencies ultimately would be a generic kind of layout of where we want the signature blocks or the purpose. But the purpose statement is something in the map. So if you ask those kind of uniforms, we naturally look at the same plate. So we say it would be below the vicinity map, but I didn't locate exactly where the vicinity map goes. What I hopefully maybe do is come up with a model, sort of this mock-up, where you guys would like to see all these things and just make the...
I mean, I don't think it's a problem, because I know, I'm sure Nancy can do it. You say one drawing, it's got your, no, it's got everything from maybe your first surveyor, wherever it is. And a zero is current on one scale. Well, you're scaling it, and you lay it over there and change it.
Stephen, I guarantee if you look at those ten flats, and I challenge you to locate those ten...
Oh, yeah, that's a different place. But what I'm saying is that's a, that's a praying ever surveyor uses every time, and it just happens to be where they're at.
So it wouldn't be an issue to...
No.
So we say we look below the vicinity map.
I mean, you make the first one, you deserve.
If we're going to do the 200 feet, we also need to look on page three at item B down at the bottom. It specifies 100 feet. And again, on page four, there's another 100 feet. We've got to change it about three places.
All right, where's the third one?
On page four, item, under the lighting scheme, item F, which is also the first F. On the next page, you have another F.
And it's on top of page four. I just do a search and look at...
Okay, and also, I want to ask the surveyors, it says in point seven that we'll have two control monuments. I think you need at least three. I mean, it's going to take three to close a loop, even if you have a triangle. So is it that much harder to put one or two more control monuments? Because you're gambling that over the next 40 years, somebody's not going to hit them with a mower and knock them out.
They're not going to be there hardly a year, probably. My controller, see, if you need names. Control monuments are usually based on development, where you set an iron pin off-site. You only want them on-site. If you have them on-site, they're really not bad.
Well, I got lot lines, my lot lines are marked with steel pegs, and they've been there 40 years.
Those are control lines.
Those are control monuments.
Okay.
Control monuments could be several. They could be those, but they could also be a pin that's centered three or a utility pin. We're saying we want at least two of those, right? Which might be corner bench, which would be an off-site one, too.
I mean, if you want, yeah, if you want, if you want, uh, you want cordons on your pin, if that's a problem. But I mean, Dean, you got to be able to either us.
Sorry.
I'd just like to be able to get back to them the next time we look at it.
State courts, yeah, or, I mean, because a lot of times, it's just a 5,000, 5,000 dollar pressure cordons, and it's only good for the surveyor.
Guys, I don't have anything else, but these guys may have more questions.
On page three, four point five D. You want the recording plat shall be 100% linen paper, jut board, or mylar material. What is jut board?
Stephen, you use it ever? It's old, we left it in there. Some people have turned it in. It's, it's, I describe it as...
I'd say metal, probably.
It is, that's the industry term, I guess. Mylar is what typically you would see, or linen paper.
Mylar. That has been tried here before. It doesn't work, because when you take it to the courthouse and record it in those plastic sleeves, the ink sticks to the sleeve.
So let's not talk...
And when you open it up, you pull the ink off of the mylar, and you don't have anything.
So Nancy, here's the thing. I'm going to think a little broader for a second. I come from a county that does 2,000 plats a year, okay?
Yes, sir, that is the county you come from.
No, no, hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second, please. The days of putting plats in plastic sleeves, trust me, our county's going to get there. Our office is there today. You can't think for the next 100 years, we're going to continue to record plats 200 a year, 50 a year, and keep putting them in plastic sleeves. So the issue of mylar in relation to plastic sleeves, I understand it. But our big issue is, how are we going to record plats, put them in the courthouse, and store them efficiently into the future? Where you're going to have to do like every other county in the state has done. You're going to stack them in the basement or in a box, and you're going to have a paper copy folded up in a file and go do a regular file system, like we're going to have to do in our office. We have how many, we're at over a couple thousand minor plats? None of which are in sleeves, they're all folded up, just the majors. Mylar's not a problem in relationship to the sleeves, she's correct. You put a mylar plat in the sleeve, it becomes a problem. We've got old plats in the sleeves, the sleeves are a problem. The bigger problem is, how much do they cost a piece, Jenny? 20 bucks a sleeve?
Almost 30.
$30 a sleeve to put two plats in there so we can hang them up or stick them in a manila folder. Guess where we're heading? No more sleeves. We're not going to spend $30 for two plats, so we have the convenience of sliding them out and looking at them. We're going to have to open the filing cabinet, unfold them, and look at the paper folded up. That's where we go in the real world. So again, it sort of makes the mylar issue. Most of the surveyors are turning in linen paper, which works in the sleeves and is fine with us. No one is turning in mylar, because the mylar's expensive. But unfortunately, there are surveyors that just prefer to do mylar. I've seen them, they just love it. It's a technique all to itself, and it is a problem to record them that way. Same with us. But that's why you make a paper copy and fold it, put it in the file. So the sleeves are an issue altogether. It's a little outside of our realm. Our county clerk is going to have a challenge someday, because those cabinets and those sleeves are very, very expensive, and it's not, it's not efficient way to hold your plats in the courthouse. You're going to have to stack them in the box someday. So I've got there already, and I don't think mylar's the issue as much as how we treat the mylar plats once they get over in the clerk's office. And of course, we keep copies in our office.
So why don't we make our standard paper instead of mylar?
Because there's our surveyors that just do mylar, and there's some that still do jut board. I just, you don't know.
I guarantee they can make a paper copy from that mylar.
Well, some just do it different. You guys jump in there, you know them. We've all got two of the folks in the room, but there are others, folks and other out-of-town folks, and we have had mylars come in this county.
Well, the big thing, a lot, there's several counties that still require, Frank County requires mylar, that's only found, which is like Nancy said, you're knocking full seven, eight plats.
They're all stuck together.
The mylar is blank.
I know.
But the big thing, it's up to the county budget. Cannon makes a full-size scanner, about $3,600. Scan it, digital, it's there. I mean, I've gone over Lexington, I, the first time I went over, I was dumbfounded. I asked for a plat and tried to get the cabinet, they're all locked up.
Don't do it.
Hit a button, and there's your, there's your plat.
Yeah. What, way I did them was, before, was we took the recording plat to the courthouse, date stamped it, carried it back to our office. We scanned the plats, we fit the plats in the GIS system, we maintained a parcel layer for the PVA. We then scanned the plats and then uploaded them to the county clerk's online service, so they were all digital. But the planning commission did everything. Once the plat was recorded, we carried it home, made the copies, put them on the PVA site, put them on the county clerk's site. And then, again, there was a copy in the courthouse you would have never saw, because all you do is go to the clerk's website and pull up the plat digital.
Well, beside the scanning, which will come in time, I agree with you, and it'll be a problem with what software you store it on, it'll stay current. But right now, today, we can do mylar, we can do paper. And I don't see any advantage to mylar at all. I mean, you do paper, it stays in a drawer. And the worst the surveyor has to do is make a copy, a paper copy from their mylar, which is, what, three bucks or something?
I mean, most platters run paper or mylar.
Yeah, it's whatever. I really don't care. I just left it, because there's folks that still use it, and it's out there. It's not a, if I'm a surveyor, I'm doing all linen paper. But you guys, you guys tell us, you think you want to get rid of mylar, we'll get rid of it.
I think the wording's just a convenience to the surveyors to keep them from having to change one other thing in the midst of several things we may be changing.
Oh, I mean, mylar is $120, a proble, but it's about $14.
It's taken care of itself, really, over time. There's still some surveyors who are just, they like to do mylar.
Also, what does the first sentence of that mean? It doesn't make any sense to me at all. The plat shall measure the scale, should be 100 feet or less. I mean, it doesn't, it isn't a sentence.
And should be?
And shall, and should, and the same thing. I mean, it's either one or the other.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
It's a typo. The should, should be, out. It's a typo. You're making advisory committee, you're making us look bad.
Well, it's just...
No, I appreciate it.
You need to get your eggs or...
No, I appreciate it.
We talked about it, but we didn't proofread it.
We didn't proofread it. We got a proofreader now. That's why we're doing this.
So we're going to change should to and?
Yeah.
And then are we going to keep the 100 feet or go to 200?
200.
200.
That changes there. And then it changes again on the next page.
Yep, got it.
Okay, while we're on that page, and H above, other pertinent information. I think we should say cemetery shall be on the plats instead of they could be. Cemetery's a major problem for developers, or anybody else that finds out they have one that didn't think they have one. And so I think we should say a cemetery shall be on the plats instead of may include.
That's state statute.
It is.
State statute.
On page three.
State survey statute, if that's, you have to show that.
I'm fine with it.
So, yeah.
I got it.
Okay, on section F, number two. The plat shall show the names of the adjacent property owners, lot numbers, plat book, page numbers. It should also be the book and page numbers if a plat's not available, and the footprint of all existing buildings. Why? And whose? The adjacent property owner? That's what it stops on.
Yeah, adjacent.
Why you, you're going to get shocked doing that. You...
Are you talking about the buildings or the references?
That's what, and that's, it says boundary lines. The plat shall show the names of adjacent property owners or lot numbers and plat book and page numbers. And I'll should say the book and page numbers of the adjacent property owner.
No, the existing buildings is on the, on the footprint, and the footprint of existing, on the plat.
But it's, but you're talking about adjacent property owners.
Well, I'm talking about the plat.
Not for the existing buildings.
I'm saying the plat shall show adjacent, but what Nancy's saying is we need to make a reference in the footprint of existing plat...
And the footprints of all existing buildings.
On the plat.
On, on the plat being reviewed. It's on the plat that we're considering. It's the surveyed plat portion.
You're, you're saying one thing, but it reads about, it reads about...
The plat shall show the footprint of all existing buildings.
Okay, we'll say the plat shall show the names of adjacent property owners or lot numbers and plat book and page numbers, and the footprint of all existing buildings within the boundary line of the plat.
Just make a different sentence.
Yeah, I can do that.
For why are you wanting to show the buildings?
On the plat you're turning in?
Yeah.
Well, it's as important as a water line or an easement, or I mean...
To know if it's vacant property, or if there's something already on the structure.
Why do you want to know? Besides, you're just been...
Well, because, well...
Like the buyer thing this morning, you know, talking about the drainage issue. Is something on there now?
Well, because we don't want to...
I don't know that.
Well, I'll give you an example. We don't want someone to file for a zoning permit and us pull a plat that we just did a month ago. And they say, yeah, I'm going to build a house, and turns out there's a trailer on the back corner. It would help, be helpful to us to know there's already a house there, or there's a detached building, or there's a garage, because we're trying to approve a new building, and another garage that has a standard, you can't have it. So this is a problem. If there's a building on it, what's the problem with just showing the building on the plat? So that the person that looks at the plat understands what's physically on? And that's the purpose of the plat, is to understand what, what's on this property. Besides, it's five acres big, it also has a sinkhole, a trailer, and a water tower. I mean, that's what we're trying to do with the plat. Just put notice on what's physically happening on the property.
Informational.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, to make a decision, you, you have to have information. You can't draw walls around it and just have us make a decision based on no information. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Well, hopefully this helps building permits and zoning permits in the future, because then we can reach to the plat and get a good snapshot of what's happening there.
And it may alleviate a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Instead of having to go through a litany of questions.
We deal with dual residences all the time. We just had one yesterday about a property and a trailer, and, you know, so. That's, are we done? Next one?
Going back to the control monuments.
What page are you on there? Page four, five?
Is that, is that for a major subdivision plat or is it for all plats?
All plats.
It says a minimum of two.
Except for PVA, then?
I don't understand it.
The purpose of the control line.
Number seven?
That's just another additional expense that you don't need.
Well, I think we're just referencing more generic. Let me go to the definition of control mon, we're being a little more generic with control monuments mean. We're saying survey markers set in accordance with KAR 201-18150, used to locate boundaries and stall improvements. So we're calling control monuments whatever. It's what's in...
But it's also says the monuments should be placed to the state plan coordinates and the National Geographic vertical data.
Which is what is in 201-KAR-18150. Survey markers set in accordance with that KAR, that's what came right out of that KAR.
Okay.
How you guys actually achieve that in the field? I think you guys do that different ways.
Yeah, that's not, that's not required now.
What's next?
What do you think it needs to say, then?
I mean, you don't have to use state plan coordinates. Now, you can use arbitrary coordinate system. If you're out in the middle of nowhere, you can use arbitrary coordinates. And that's what I'm saying, those, you can all know good. I would say if feasible, use state plan coordinates. I mean, a lot of surveyors now have GPS, it doesn't take too much time.
So you need us to say the monuments should be placed, or may be placed.
The monuments are placed.
Right, but it's saying the monuments shall be placed to the state plan coordinates.
If feasible.
Well, and they say if no other controls can be established, I guess.
Because I thought we approved GPS.
Yeah.
So would that supersede?
Everybody uses GPS.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
But if you don't use GPS, then you do use control monuments, right?
No.
You use arbitrary coordinates, so if you start with one and say 5,000, 5,000...
What do you call those? Is there a name for them?
It's just their arbitrary, I mean, you just, you give them, you assign them, sir.
Surveyor tricks, I call them.
Put that in there, or surveyor tricks.
Or surveyor trick. We can, we can fix that. So you think the monuments should be, and if no other controls exist? Now, you know, I sent these to you guys and let you comment, and you all didn't call me, or... Y'all have had them.
Steve?
I understand.
It would clear it up for me a lot if you put this, the statement, see definition of control monuments.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Right after that.
I'll do that. I'll do that.
They'll send you where to find out what we're calling a control monument.
In articles.
Like what you are, call a control monument, if you ask a surveyor what's a control monument, it's not a corner, because a control monument is a sentence.
Thank you.
Where you set up your instrument.
Alrighty, I got that.
Moving on.
Next.
Page six. M. Land surveyor's certification. That has been changed by the state board, and it has specific wording. It also has been changed for people that use GPS.
I'll be glad to put whatever.
That one is so old, it's not even fun.
So they don't have to be, people that use GPS don't have to be licensed?
I, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm at, I, I know, I'm asking.
Everybody does a survey, has to be licensed.
Okay.
Can you get us?
In good standing with the state board. But this certificate is out of date twice.
Well, what's this updated?
Didn't, didn't we change that recently?
Yes. We changed it for GPS.
Can't we just go back to what we changed it to?
There are two.
That change, she's saying.
One is for a, a GPS, and then there's another.
All I'm saying is, can't we go back to whatever we changed certifications to?
Is it in a strike?
Sure.
Since that was an update.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right here.
The one on, uh, probably, the one that Doug did, or AGE, is the new one for GPS.
Okay, I got you.
The other one that is online is the other one that can be used for people that don't use GPS, but this one is totally out of date.
Okay.
So you're gonna send me?
For the third time, can't we go back to what we had previously had when we made the changes? Would that be okay?
Yes.
So Nancy, will you send me those two paragraphs, and I'll put them right in that box?
They should be in our.
Okay.
We, I guess we made a resolution, it's probably in the.
Well, they weren't in the resolution, they were, the signature box was, there was some verbiage in there, it's more in the minutes.
That's just been recent.
Yeah, I saw it.
Probably found it in the minutes.
It's in the minutes.
Here's one on AGE.
I'll, I'll put them in here.
And there's one on Nancy's.
So there'd be two options, one for GPS and other.
You pull those off KAR two oh one eighteen.
Yeah. Well, that's what actually I was gonna put in the box, is just to follow those, they could change again. Trying to get away from us having to word that exact, but that was what I was gonna do, is just put the standard in there that they have to certify it according to. Cause the notes, funny enough, do tend to say some different things that we get from different people, so. Alrighty.
One's on yours and one's on Doug's, he said, right? I got them both for you.
Got them, thank you. And I'm gonna put the KAR reference under it too.
Okay, moving on.
Are we done?
Have we gone through all, four, are any questions?
Four, and, and again, five and six are the same, and seven is just our definitions. And again, if you guys want to, we've gone through them, we can wait, and.
No.
Do whatever y'all wanna do.
I've got one thing on seven, I'd like it to include the definition of an engineer that's referenced in the documents, and just follow your thing you do for land surveyor, and say the engineer is professional engineer certified by the state, or something like that.
I've got something, you saying in seven?
I'm saying in seven, there's no definition of an engineer.
I've got one.
You do?
On seven one, it's, it's so brief, sorry, but it blends in there kinda hard, but there is, it says a qualified person registered and currently licensed by state, a board of licensure for professional engineers and land surveyors. It's on seven one, kinda stuck in there, under easement and above erosion protection. May not say what it needs to say.
Seven one, use of terms.
I'm not seeing it. Oh, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the page numbering's all messed up, it's under E, sorry. Page number is another thing, we'll talk about that later.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Notes on it.
He's got it.
Is that?
Got it.
Jim, you think that works?
Yep.
Okay. And again, you guys, this is something we're gonna keep tweaking. Um, we're gonna bring five and six back, and we can continue to evolve, but that's the whole goal, is let's make these things modern, and let's keep moving them forward.
So, where do we stand now? Do we, you wanna table this and vote on it next time, or are we gonna vote on it now?
I really just look to y'all, you guys.
I would love to offer a motion.
Yes.
To approve what's been presented today with the corrections, adjustments, and notations that we've discussed, and as I'm sure I recorded in the minutes.
We're talking one through four?
No, I'm talking about.
We had, we had a generic motion, maybe. I'd also tag on that, that we repeal all those prior resolutions that are in conflict, uh, or duplication, because we had dozens of resolutions that were out there.
Please add that to the motion.
That were numbered by date and not document reference.
So full repeal and approval of everything we've been sent, okay?
Yes, and I'll second it.
So you're saying include article six?
Five and six.
There's no change in five and six.
Five has just been moved from the back of the document to the middle, and six is exactly the same.
Yeah, but we got rid of appendix B that was in one of them, and it, and six still references appendix B.
Well, I saw that, but that was just a reference, I figured that was struck by default, since there's no more appendix, there's a lot of parentheses.
You need to put what it goes back to now.
But the meat of six, all the standards are staying the same.
So are we saying there's still maybe some language cleanup that needs to be done?
Yeah, five and six.
If we do that, do we have to come back and prove it again?
We'll just take, bring those articles in, piecemeal from here on out. This at least gets the bones in the right place, and gets this document restructured, and we move forward, and we'll keep amending it as we go, if we need to.
Let's, let's approve, let's follow, well, I'd like to follow.
We've got a motion on the.
I know, I'm, I'm having discussion. I'd like to follow your motion, but then bring back six piecemeal, because there are a lot of corrections in it that need to be done.
And again, I wanna get Mr. Coffey and Mr. Campbell, a developer or two, and the engineers specifically on the, in the room, and come up with a draft for you all to review. That's the next one.
Well, I mean, my corrections are just like wording things like that.
Well, we're gonna be changing the whole chapter, is ultimately the goal.
Alright.
Alright, we have a motion on the table. Did you make the second?
Mary Beth.
Mary Beth made the second. Alright, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
May I ask what that motion was?
We accepted article.
To approve, um, the entire packet today with the corrections.
Changes.
It's that right there.
As discussed during.
And we'll be five and six as they are?
Yes.
Yes, and will subsequently, subsequently be reviewing those.
Six.
In the future.
There's a couple new business items, I apologize. I know we've gone long. And one is kinda important, it's a budget amendment, it's just housekeeping, and you had it in your packet.
I move we approve the budget.
I'll second.
Hey, there was one small tweak, sorry, line fifty-eight, needs to go up to seven thousand dollars. Fifty-eight, I believe it says six, needs to go to seven. That's one tweak. Jenny just gave me that this morning. Everything else is the yellow items in the very right-hand column are what's being amended, this is housekeeping in nature, and the budget committee needs to get back together real soon, because we're gonna get next year's numbers ironed out, as, as well as talk about a couple other things related to this amendment.
Okay, personnel committee.
You have a motion and a second.
Alright, do we have to prove it?
Yeah, the budget amendment, yes.
With the corrections.
We got a motion and a second with the correction, all in favor? Uh, pass. Personnel committee, report.
We met, there was nothing we did except talk about our evaluation schedule that we're gonna do for the staff, and, and COLAs for next year.
Okay, advisory committee report, I can take care of it, we spent a couple hours going over this previously for, before today's meeting. Obviously, we didn't spend enough time finding all the titles.
I spent four hours on it.
April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen zoning permits, just information. Yeah, that's not it. And then, uh, new business, uh, fourth of July falls on a Wednesday. Yep. Uh, I guess what's, I, I'd make a motion that we meet the following week, on the eleventh.
Eleventh, does that work?
I'm not sure, I'm gone already.
We could go third, fifth, eleventh, week before, we just, chairman's suggesting we just move it a week forward.
Dump it up a week.
We get a quorum, we get a quorum, we don't know.
The eleventh, you said?
The eleventh, to be a, a week.
Yeah.
Later.
Keep our same time, place, it shouldn't be a problem.
June, July.
Medium-wise.
Oh, yeah, that sounds good.
That's okay? Do we need to vote on that? Did you make the motion, and, can we just?
If we sound like a vote.
I made a motion, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion that, our July meeting will be moved forward to the eleventh.
Thank you.
I guess that's bad. All approved. Pass. Uh, any other announcements, business? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Thank you all, appreciate it, thank you for your patience, your expertise.